This conference will now be recorded.
I travel as like a flight attendant. Now I have to, my job changed so I can't leave as much as I used to. My grandparent's like, we went to church, my home is a lot. It was like a new, put the PG pepper in there. Oh, thank you.
Well, you know, you're supposed to get that.
Uh, we should know on Facebook.
Well, you know, I wouldn't ever like, can anybody come?
Yeah, they're married to poor.
Yeah.
I got two sons. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'm eighty seconds from my house. So he was right here in town. He hasn't gone, right? He was a senior.
Yeah.
Murdaria.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. He says there at the, at the museum.
Well, I got, I'm volunteering. That's, that's why you guys scheduled the day.
It's embarrassing to keep your ways, but you gotta, uh...
Burn up pencil on purpose.
Yeah, it's gotta be that day off. What's the word?
Oh, well, it had been like three months. You guys just like to do more or no.
Oh, yeah.
My story is gonna be that's why you guys don't have the day. You can dial it out. Here for the day. It's all right.
I can't believe we're under a couple minutes of waiting.
I know.
I'm not watching.
But at least that shows you the, shows me that you've been to the museum. You know.
Morning, Hannah. Morning. So how do you deal with your animals? You guys saw on the ride, right? Yeah, yeah. It's a topic that, yeah. Cause she's in the land, so she has to, yeah, step in the road. Yeah, I like that. I love how people, they come to basically, she says stuff, they're like, well, why are you wearing your chicken? Like...
Well, today we're gonna be talking about the news for our children.
What's it gonna say? We got our, we knew we got our blue homes. Our blue homes?
For what?
You had it.
Oh.
You had a DSH?
Oh, I mean.
Yes.
She's like, time this guy's done.
Yeah. So, I mean, X, Y, Z.
You know, those things don't help like one.
Yeah.
Sean, I was gonna wear a hat today. I was like, oh, of course, don't wear a hat. Like, it's probably not. I was like, well, it's like church. Oh, I thought so, but I know it's called back and forth. I look out. Oh, that would've been good! Oh, that would've been good! I know, I was telling my husband that, like, oh, what if I didn't wear the center hat? I think that's okay, right? Cause I don't wear a hat. I just couldn't wear a hat. This one is very nice. If you don't wanna feel like it's a compliment, I, I would've known I would've worn my top one. I'd like to see you with the camera.
Yes.
I want to see you again.
Yeah, I was probably gonna start it here. Yeah, I could be right there for you.
I could start it.
Oh, good.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The last, we're all together in March. A couple of center you were seeing, session after that. Set for a period of time. I have the, uh... Oh, it's not working yet.
It's not? I was just using it. Now let me see.
There's more slides.
Try it again.
There we go.
The TV right there.
You're gonna have to rearrange all this here. I'm just, anyway, I just wanted to know that number.
So, great, what's happening?
Or just page way, or not page way, but you know, if you're gonna...
Seven?
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
The municipal council retreats, uh, have a very flexible agenda. Kind of let the conversation go wherever you want it to go. Uh, open to the public, of course, recording, uh, vocal statement, comment from the public. For council session, opportunity to talk about whatever council wants to work on. Uh, and no action. Uh, so today, what I have for a draft agenda, very flexible, is talk about what we wanna accomplish today. We'll review the notes from the past retreat. We can, you know, chat about any updates within there. Statement and federal legislative agendas. So have those items built into the slides. And then any kind of additional updates, discussion from you all as we kind of wrap up. And then, when you want. So let's talk about objectives today. So then, it was online, computer screen, and then, yeah. So let's think about what are the most significant issues that have come up in the past six months? Exactly. Yeah. Uh, what, quickly. On what issues has most of your time in interview been created? How is that aligning with your overall vision and direction for the city? What successes have you had as a city, as a city council in the last six months? What would you like to have gone differently over the last six months? And what do you hope to accomplish today and over the next six or twelve months? And I don't know if we have pens to note that and stuff so you can scratch down, you can jot, but I wanna give you a few minutes to think about these questions. And then share with the group and make the ten of them. Great. And Hannah, do we have a bunch of, uh, like paper and stuff that we can, I might want to get your own notes?
Yes.
Get more. I know, I hope you think it works. No, whatever.
Think about that and we'll bring stuff to you.
Are we allowed to start answering number one or do you want us to wait?
Um, just, wait a second, cause I want you to think about all six of these questions.
All six at once?
And have a thought. It is, but think of it, uh, in an intuitive way too.
Gosh.
Over the last six months, there was an issue you were working through in the city that just kinda like took up a lot of time. You know, something that was surprising. And, and Al, uh, Hannah's got the slide deck, and so she can publish that on the city's website. I'd like to go first. So, Mayor Tom, you got it.
Well, hold on. Do I say out number one? I mean, I think the most obvious one is just growth and zoning.
Say more about that.
Just, um, that, yeah, I mean, we're having to approve a lot of things that involve growth and, you know, obviously that gets a bit of attention. And, and what makes the zoning changes, which raises hairs and people get, you know, more involved because they're hearing these big things. When, you know, except for very normal and natural to this, this growth and, you know, obviously we have a layered system in place. Budget committee, planning committee. This isn't just like random thing we're necessarily doing, you know? It's months and months and months of taxpayer dollars into these things. And then people wanna just stop it right when it comes to us. It's like they just don't understand, I think, from the very beginning, like how those things develop. And so, yeah, whether it's planning or new homes, little developments going in. I think, I'm sort of in front of them and meet people's expectations.
And, so, any other things you wanna add responding to these questions? You got the, you can push back on some things. What about successes?
Did you see it with the first bullet?
Oh, no. We're just kinda rolling through all of them.
Right, okay.
And it doesn't have to be exhaustive. It's, it's like, you know, obviously, this is one that stands out.
Delivery, I'm like, yeah, I understand he was one of the, so neither of them all at the same time. I didn't know he was also, and talk about that. Has a mixed pile, so.
Yes, it is mixed pile.
Got it.
And, and you're, but you're right on track with what I was hoping to do is like, oh, yeah, this is, this is kind of the big, the thing we've been dealing with from my perspective the last six months or so, right?
Well, I think my last, that, too, that's why, the reason that I've been hearing from citizens is they're extremely worried about the growth. And I, and I always try to explain to them, it's like, listen, the process of all that goes. Um, I've been hearing about, um, wanting sound barrier, one works with the Will House. And now I've got citizens talking about, oh, we can't have a pickleball court. Uh, that here at its park, that all the neighbors, we, they'll hear that and they just won't be able to handle it.
Yeah, it's, it's possible.
Oh, and I, I asked for a server again.
And so what I've been is I, as soon as I come down, as I went about a couple of blocks from my house, I walked up there and I started taking my pictures. It's a warm house. Immediate effect, the rest all have trees and bushes around them. And so what I was gonna do, but I didn't have enough time to just give up, was go to the battleground and let the stand, listen to their pickleball court. And see how they keep that on their lawn and maybe I still can be able to hear it.
You're gonna knock on the door?
See, I got in the battleground city.
Oh, no, no, try to see. You have to go in the house to hear, cause you're gonna be, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly. If you're in the house. Anyways, I'm, I'm already trying to do things so that I have a responsible response. Um, and the other thing is people, they don't want businesses, but they want it to be at the junction and they don't want the extra traffic. I understand that, so I've been working on that. Which is kind of the great thing that people have just been talking and talking about. They do want the taxpayer's money, you know, the tax base, want something big at the junction and not here. And there are people that say, hey, a couple of card rooms is fine, but what about the other two card rooms that sit in there? Again, we need, we need to have businesses and, and have what's going on. We need to have business going on at the old city hall.
They don't want the big box shopping mall wiping out downtown?
Oh, no.
No?
No.
Coles over here, or South West by?
I'm not allowed to have, for my group's sake, either.
Hey, okay. That's, that sounds good. Who wants to go next? Tell the case move this.
My number interesting. Uh, the work in the act always consumes a hell of a lot of energy. For all the cities and especially their impact on the small cities staff. And it in an order that becomes a nightmare, a frustration because you're held up. The time you spend looking to get there, not the Pauline show, watch that. Year after year, you have to hear it. My name is...
I mean, since nineteen ninety-four.
It's just this whole cycle started. Next night, you would need someone to figure it out down there, but it doesn't seem to be happening. And as each of the cities grow, it becomes even greater impact and a cost. And they don't have any compunction to change sister and brother of it. Uh, how they go about it. So that is a huge frustration and almost a point of tension with me, with the captain. Because of the fact that us on the smaller cities. And, um, especially when they remind and have to go back and do what they do, and they do have to, right, but they're doing it. It just becomes very frustrating. Um, because holding down a lengthy hot list and line of tasks to be accomplished, all the two S have to stop. And go through that path to address the rest of the issues. Um, so that's my biggest concern actually. That I think has had to be this city in, in, for some time. But I'm, I'm happy.
And apart from that number, right there, the workshop, tell you a call. Thank you. So I can get all that transferred. That is perfect, so, thank you very much.
They don't, you know, slowing along that drift has the greater impact that they have. I don't think they can, it depends, you know, year after year, it depends on who is likely to position there, okay?
Yeah.
And the last few years, it's gotten, it's, it's a second. My eyes, we even understand where their role is.
Yeah.
That's a great one. Obviously, it's not an Olympic, you're gonna put somebody down in Clark County, Lori House, call somebody just to sit there and speak for us? Because it's like an exhausting thing to do. I mean, look at what happened when we all showed up. I mean, they helped that. One day they have more issues, but it seems like it's always...
That would be, that would be a good time.
Yeah, but in the sad part is they changed their mind back for different kinds of people. They did, and they sure.
They waited until we all...
Exactly.
Four hours, that's good. And then it's brought back, supering the stack up. All this, nobody there. Is this on, which part do you mean? We're talking, we're talking about middle housing? Implementing middle housing legislation or...
We've got nothing to complain about.
Ex-resourced land, ex-complant, whatever. Okay.
It's, it's up there, that's healthier.
And that's global impact. Okay, the smaller communities that have, uh, properties that, you know, they have been spending, I don't know, pretty much years, but are, are still considered a aggrains. So you have to address those issues.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the resource land, the issue in Clark County has been, that's been since, thank you.
That's a couple of, no sense. You're personally...
Yeah, comp land, then. Every comp land in Clark County that's since GMA has, you know, come back to a agreement because, you know, we should deal, right? You should lie, it's friends of Clark County, uh, Clark County citizens united. Uh, EIA, I think, is sued before, uh, so it did always come back. Comp land down here is messy, but it's messy up north too, by the way.
Sure.
I mean, I don't think there's a, uh, it isn't.
Yeah.
Because of the same issues, but, I mean, yeah.
The issue up there is housing affordability and middle housing legislation. So it's, it's the greater density and the cookie cutter approach that the legislature took to, to web this issue of housing affordability statewide. So they passed legislation that says jurisdictions, no matter the size and scale, have to kind of all do it the same way. With some minor rigidity. Um, and then you get, like, so Medina, where the city manager, three thousand people. It's, it's like an inch away. It's, there's, we have a gas station, a country club.
Where is it?
Medina is a little piece of land that's just west of Bell.
Okay, okay.
So right on the, watching, whole, actually watching control.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, high end.
And, and it's very high.
That's small, small heart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bezos has lived there and, I guess, bought the property and recently he had housing, what's called principal, which is right next to the Medina. Points community, which is Medina, Hunts Point, Yarra Point, Prideville, all small city towns. And you have Seattle and Bellevue and Kirkland, uh, all kind of around these small city towns. And so middle housing is increasing density, and what that looks like in Seattle is a single family lot. And a little home gets torn down and four to six attached townhomes go on. Uh, no on-site parking requirements. So, street parking, that's an issue. In Medina, the option that would be implemented was to allow two accessory building units per single family lot. And a lot of the homes already had carriage houses and that sort of thing that could be used as... But from a planning standpoint, I think on that twenty-year horizon, just, oh, okay. Everything begins with the land, right? If a city is a body, then the land is the flesh of that body, right? But the flesh of that body can live and function without an adequate transportation system. You know, if you think about like intersections, not toward me, that's, you know, you need to go get a program from the cardiologist, right? And so think about, okay, well, we have, you know, a thousand households, nine hundred, a thousand households in Medina. And now we could re-add that by having two additional households on each single family property within the area. You know, well, these are small houses, okay, but that's still people living there. Generating wastewater, assuming, you know, freshwater, drinking water, trips on the road, schools, that kind of school. So it's like, are we ready? So you gotta look at all your plan and go, well, could make another little bit of transportation system work. Yeah.
One of the things I have on my list, yes, we're in the road.
Yeah. You know, in Medina, fortunately, uh, well, fortunately, unfortunately, we have control because water and wastewater provided by the city development. Fires provided by the city development contract, right? And so, what we still don't know, do we have the capacity, you know, so our pipes, we can, uh, streets, to handle the division of love and of counter. You know, so all this legislation comes out of the way. It's like one side, but it's all, uh, it's not very well thought out. And, and it's not respectful of individual communities, own identities, sense of place, direction that they wanna go. So the local context is what's missing and the flexibility to be responsive to that local context. So, yeah, and it's too many of them challenge for everyone around the state. And up there, Mercer Island and Clyde Hill, I think, hold their comp plans that you're important there, uh, out of the plans. That's how they, um, they were okay with what we did in Medina. But, you know, and I think Hunts Point's good. I'm not sure about their own thing. But, yeah, Clyde Hill, which is the hill between Bellevue and, uh, they're out of compliance for that one. They're sitting twenty thousand, thousand people.
I'm curious, we don't have any towns. Which is a whole town. How many towns do you have? You do not have the comp plan. I mean, Calis does need to, so we're trying to deal with that.
Original plan, you can, but I see, um, what I pulled, you're saying Calis?
Calis calling here, but, uh, management, they didn't take the public plan.
Of not planned. So we're, so are they just, apparently, opt out of funding? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're, uh, so real estate excite stacks, uh, they, they don't get reached to, which is part of it. They can't do impact, correct? Because they don't plan under GMA. So traffic, traffic impact needs parking, that needs stuff like that to fund your capital facilities and helps you respond to growth as it happens. They don't have those tools. But I think there are some legislative mandates that apply to counties that plan under GMA and. So it starts to look kind of the same in some way. One second. I think that Kelly's is. Washington, right, start with. But imagine being the city of Woodland where part of your jurisdiction resides in Clark County. Can this plan under GMA of all is a talent. So I think Woodland has opted to basically land under GMA because of proportion that's in Clark County. So there are those weird kind of things too. That's a damage, you have damage to the county, right? Yeah. So you're, if you don't do it, you can't like what London's done, just spread out everything. There's no concentration of housing. You can, it's still happy for. Yeah, that creates a lot of risk, create spread of stunt porters. Right? We, we can't just go up and take all the land that's up there to try to pay the bike for it. Go through studies and still think possible to lose it. So, so like I said, it's damage, you do damage. Yeah. If there's any perfect solution. If you're going to try to bring in agricultural land to urban growth. Basically, it's an environmental impact on the designation of that land is used agriculture or vegetation, right? It can be right against urbanizing activity, but that's just kind of that. And you can check all the boxes, rigorous study, demonstrate that, you know, it's justified and it'll get. And we're still, it doesn't matter if it's, uh, in urban reserve, right? So that was all, that was all urban reserve, right? It was designated to do.
Wasn't even full agriculture.
No, it was all exactly.
Oh.
Reserve or.
Okay.
For a pound and it's still up.
So let's look at it now that we've gone up there to that, they come through, right? So they're pretty important to the study, right?
The study should be down in October.
So everything's going as planned now? I mean, or they, did they have?
We're on schedule.
Clark County has a long history of paying for very expensive studies.
Oh, so what I was gonna ask, and then you have law kitchen again.
They can fully be informed whatever.
And then say, we don't care what we have to say about this.
Well, they can't say that, but then that area can open up too.
Sure.
State that that was.
Okay, yeah, exactly, exactly. Why are you stopped? Yeah, just like, he would get penalized if we refused to vote this way, so why are they not being penalized?
The thing that I told my council in Medina is this is where the legislature has now on its top, right? They're not, they're not, next session, they'll be in GMA, they'll be housing stuff, session after that. So, you know, part of it is you have to stay on top of what your local issues are. And your city works and understands what the impacts and how to mitigate those things are. The other thing is very active legislative. And the most effective place to do that is AWC. Like, yeah, opportunities for mayors to come together and talk about what's going on in their city. My mayor, uh, is on this, she's doing this little project. And she's, uh, let's see, I think Mayor North Ben, she collaborates with Mayor Yarra Point. There's a couple of mayors over on the east side, which the east side cities have different issues than the west side. There's the declines in potter, right? Navy group over there, lot of group on the west side. So different set of issues, different dynamics going on, and the legislature goes, here you go, that's our solution, deal with it. And it doesn't work. So there's that feedback loop of, oh, hey, you know, reps and senators, what you've got going on here, this, this doesn't actually solve the problem. It makes it worse. You know, a lot of them don't care though. And I hear that a lot of them up there, they're talking about they're done with allowing exceptions. They will straighten it. Uh, and they're not caring for the city. That's what I heard last night. So it's, uh, it's gonna be in the contract. A lot. And there's a part of what you see in the county is just the dysfunction of historical dysfunction of Clark County, right? But the other part that you see is how they and everyone else are being affected by changing work decisions, right? And they just happen to not have a good base to work from that functionally responded to the change because of their dysfunction, right? And then your citizens are going, they don't know that it's the legislature. They don't know the county's show down here. When you all, they say, you, 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 you know, you're ruining my quality of life, my community, right? You also need to like work together, team, council, mayor, to figure out, what do we, what do we do with that? How do we bring our citizens? How do we help them understand where this is coming from and what we're. Okay, so, Sean, Casey.
Mine was kind of more so about like the legislative account. I mean, my issues that I have dealing with personally right now are with C-tran and, you know, the recent destruction of our board competition. How that's ultimately can hurt not only, but potentially can affect our city. And, you know, through the, the C-tran is set up to provide a service that, you know, benefits those who, they want or need or everything transportation. So it's not like something we must have, but it's a, it's a benefit to the community that we all pay for. It's not cheap, but the state just makes, gives their agency ball and everything. And then wants to change things for other reasons and it affects everybody in county. And, you know, it sets up the back burner. Right, they tell them the future. Yeah, that way, they certainly, you lose trust.
What's an actual law protection?
We can't get a straight number yet. I have two numbers that I.
But when you say that's coming.
Well, that's.
I see, I have.
That's the problem, is that the bus bill, but it does.
That's C-tran.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think they got the numbers, but that's what they said they got.
Did you count up there?
Hey, but I didn't ask, what is track equity?
Oh, okay. Well, because, yeah.
It's been about. It's been about. I just said, I'm not like, do you guys want to finish it about?
Just about to get numbers from them?
Oh, it's the whole thing.
Interesting, why? Because they don't want to prove that they're.
I said, I have two packets that I, I didn't forget.
More important, I can't.
Well, that was also a loss of numbers that were paid into the.
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
Well, I first started with, we, we didn't see them, but we had.
Of course.
So we contracted the capital. Want to have that on wheel. But it held up, it screwed us. And this factory opened and it wasn't initially, I mean, they, they couldn't go on into it, case of down and sample three. And they points where they can get on.
I'll just hire a little man, a parent director. Our thing to, on third and ninth street.
Yeah.
Three times a day, and I'll be right there.
A perfect job for Alan, with that, the LC logo on the sign. Does that won't keep us for long?
So, uh, issue at the speed of our C-tran says, and I've talked about Sean. With the change of the board, Vancouver's got a very veteran a little bit, uh, mayor there. And she wants to make sure that the county, the entire county is being taxed for the light rail system, right? Last numbers I heard, they're paying in like ninety percent of the C-tran, uh, of their, what they're getting out. So they get ten percent free, which is going on the back of the rest of the city. The rest of the cities, um, as mayors have been in discussions and have pushed back. That we, we don't want to pay for the going in on the light rails. Um, that we don't feel that we can be taxed for that. And so, as you know, at that last council meeting, the council meeting before, that first of August, first of August, I even asked, given on record, what we should do. Now, can we just leave C-tran? She would forget that she cannot. But after she continues, Mayor Camus, the city's administrator there, uh, they're saying, we can't, we can't create a bill of. So, yeah, I'll use the example, if Camus decides to leave, but Washewell decides to stay, it, it can happen in case of, right? The bus still has to go through Camus to get Washewell. So all of us are pretty much on board with the C-tran because the amount of money that is going into C-tran and the service we're giving is not matching at all.
What's your opinion?
I, I don't know the exact numbers, that's what he was supposed.
Oh, payment, I thought you wanted ridership numbers.
Well, you want those too, I asked, I asked ridership.
Oh, ridership, okay.
I was the ridership number five, right? But I asked without A and A, and they said, oh, oh, we'll get those. I don't know how.
If we, uh.
Oh, okay.
We have a break.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry for, this is like a silly question now. How are we paying them if not know how much we're paying them? How are they, they don't?
Because it comes out of tax.
It's a tax.
Oh, gotcha. So they just tip and whatever, and they, they withdraw every month or whatever.
We get point zero seven percent.
And it's out of, and they have the people authority based on a certain percentage, so that they take that, okay.
So we don't think this ride, this mayor can be the template. We don't think the right member in Vancouver did all the ridership, right? And the light rail, which is not going to benefit, yeah, it's not going to benefit any of us out here. So we've been pushing back. Uh, the last resort is the C-tran, right? The, the one that Mayor Matt Cole just pushed out to the board on Tuesday that Sean voted on, um, stated that from their interpretation of the composition that was decided on at the late August meeting was illegal. So they're pushing back on the DOT, ahead of the DOT, then saying it's illegal. And they want to stake funding away if we don't want. Basically giving you a four, three, right? So Vancouver has four, four, three, two, so they would have an authority to say, on those examples, and decide everything.
And another thing too, with I, with the county issue, I mean, uh, you know, they've set up five issues to cover. And then, so two of those districts cover City of Vancouver as well. So not only would the, um, city have four votes, two of their three votes potentially could be in Vancouver giving them potentially ten more votes, so.
Send a double dip.
Yeah, so it'd be double dipping, and that in our scheme, there's.
So we are pushing, everybody's pushing, all the cities are pushing.
The whole thing on the board competition is that the, the fervor is so unclear that there, they, we can certify our own board competition. But the compliance is based on what the state wants to determine, so there's no actual like, um, there's no like, you know, or points that we have all.
Well, the state benefits from having the heavy City of Vancouver competition because then there's more federal funding that comes in.
Yeah.
And less money that has to be spent by the state.
They just keep seeing competition based on population. And like, if you look at it, like, county numbers, it's. So.
Well, sounds like we're in small college, I mean, on a small level.
What's that?
Like where they're looking at population?
Yeah, I think it's, it's kind of a complex thing. I remember like the last time we were talking C-tran board competition.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two. Yeah, and they, everybody was okay with how the board was.
Well, and, and the issue back then was if Vancouver had an additional seat and you have a majority of council members on there, and so you might have some like.
Oh, they have, right, yeah.
Right, you have a forum of council there, like, how do you deal with that, right? And so they wanted to just like, okay, well, Vancouver said, we're fine just having three seats, so we have this issue. And this run, how C-tran works with our, you know, one council member. I'm not totally up to speed on why they're suddenly okay with having four instead of three if they, you know, somehow worked through the O P A issues. Um, there's nothing that's on record of why they're okay with it. And then you can look at that and see why they're going out there.
Yeah.
Right? When people are trying to change things where we're not paying for light rails going, uh, going in. And also, board competition, you, you maybe only need every four years, not year three.
Oh, yeah. The ridership law, yeah, it's assumption, still assumption, so it's not fact.
So, you know, when this was set up, C-tran was set up years, years ago, these were problems. Right? And the goal is representation and give representation of one person, one vote kind of stuff. Then, yeah, you make a great point about how if Vancouver has three people on the board or four people, and now, you know, you've got two county council members on who represent districts that are in the city of Vancouver, then all of a sudden, you know, you have over representation from the population of the state. So how do you settle that about to equity?
Five percent is a bad application. You know, all of the entities would actually have ridership.
I, I know equity is a loaded word, but it applies here, right? Inclusion applies here because we have a, it has for your privilege systematically from the way it's set up. And it just kind of evolved that way over time. So you have to like, okay, consider reset button here. Why are the center representative, the center citizens who pay the same as the Vancouver citizen in the system having less representation in policy matters? Right, that's.
Yeah.
It's just that.
Well, that's what I brought up when we put the park right in. That's how I brought it up, but I said, look, we're paying into it, we have to help it up here. I knew it was here. But, but I will say on their, their, they were happy and worth it. I didn't buy it at all.
And, and I think most people, when you, okay, let's step away from political issues. Light rail is a, you know, kind of a lower level, um, political issue than representation, right? Zoom out and talk about the values of representation and equity and look how the system works and how it's set up. Let's, let's start there and not be, oh, well, we're trying to like push this policy through. And so, you know, just like Jerry Andrews going on in Texas and responsibly in California, you know, zoom back out to the, be egonistic about the policy and talk about how the system works, right? Approach it from that way. And then usually you can get three or four heads to go, oh, yeah, you're right.
Right, you just.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
But you, yeah, they're going out, but like, you are too fixated on pushing a policy. But you, yeah, they're coming out of it like, you are too fixated on pushing a policy into the, than you are about the system working adequately and providing equal representation.
But that's the agenda, they don't care. That's the actual agenda, right? They don't care if they're caring about just their, they don't want to take that big view from space and look down and go, hey, wait a minute, this really doesn't. So, yeah, our view is.
They're gonna be mad.
That's right.
They're already giving their equal pay from us, they don't care.
Well, you know, it, it, yeah, there is, there is some sad parts to that whole light rail system, that if there's no light rail, no bridge. And I have seen the photos of the bridge, it's not in good shape, I, I warn my wife every time we go across it, this is not. I mean, you know, you're light, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty scary, you know, and, and what's sad is that the states even uh, politically clout, you know, Oregon is, who's saying without that light rail, there's no bridge. That's ridiculous. So now that people's lives are dangerous, and they plan for the, the, the assistance and their failure of tracking. And it's all. Oh, really?
You haven't been selling no money?
No, not for. Oh.
That's terrible. And, you know, then it goes back to, wait, the last, the last, why aren't we building a third bridge? Right?
Yeah.
And it took you three hours to get from the client to horse road to here for our last budget, three hours.
Yeah, why not get those back for it?
Right, so now you want to shut down a bridge and build the, build a wing of it and try to follow more traffic around, it doesn't make sense. And that goes back to that, hey, we need to up here and look at it, is this all working perfectly? They don't care.
It's, how do we decide the issues? How will we set up a representative in the system in an equitable way and then decide?
No.
Start with that, start with this. Yeah, and then if people are like, well, I don't care about that, then they need to be on the record saying, I'm okay with these people having privilege, I mean, not. Right? That's, that was a, yeah, so get on the record and then, okay, well, we can't resolve this. Then, this seems to be sort of a constitutional principle violation and then.
So it's asking the cities dying together to get, you know, the representation, so it's on each town at home?
It's been discussed, but when we go to that point, that's ten years now, right? We're, we're only allowed to make a decision so far.
But then you're saying, yeah, is that even possible though, I'm asking? Like all these small towns getting together, they're paying one lawyer, put their people together, and saying, we're gonna fight them. You know, well, you gotta stand up yourself, because if not, I mean, we're doing the pain.
Taxes.
Yeah, then we don't even have.
Without reparentation.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a big off-variety, uh, irony. Uh, you said factor, you know, we gotta have more competition. As, whatever she, that she be happening, uh, get it certified through, we have a year on that. On that, talk about, we're on board today, but we gotta be here. In the, we'll put that in, that would be able to be the, our former representative. How he, he was there. See, this is stuff that the, the residents don't pay attention to, right? They just hear a little bit of invite, and they don't really know the finer details of it, because they don't care to. And then they start through, like this, the talking, and it just becomes this huge thing that's not going to happen at all. They cause more problems.
Yes. Well, I.
I mean, how did people, he should have.
I, I'm just one person, and I'm not espousing in this sort of political agenda. But my observation is that the reason why our democracy overall is having a similar part of it.
Oh, I love it, yeah.
You know, so we're, right? Uh, is because we've sacrificed the core principles that under the democracy pursue politically.
Yep.
Unhols on all sides.
Yeah.
There's all the way across, yeah, right? And so, I, I think that the end of that is to refocus on. Like, build rights, type and stuff, action.
That brings up a whole other thing, that you gotta interpretation, but you gotta hold other, yeah, you gotta hold other.
It comes down to like, people who are pushing the agenda have to admit that what they're trying to do is privilege one group over another, separate people. People only do that. Well, I mean, if they, they need to go on the record and say, yes, I don't care about these principles. And then, as voters, we should be able to say, well, then you're not qualified because you have to represent everybody.
That's right.
Right, right? You shouldn't, you should be disqualified from having access to the leverage of power. If you don't espouse the idea that everybody deserves the same levels of service, right? Because everybody pays the same unit of system. But we're too focused on agendas.
Well, it's just like when we vote for a presidential candidate, we don't know how votes are always getting counted, we don't know whose votes are getting counted, and similar. It's like we're participating in the democracy, but is there a guarantee that that democracy is working? That we're participating in it, but then the agenda from the inside is, oh, wait, no, this is actually how it's gonna go, it's a matter of democracy, yeah.
Or manipulating things.
Yeah, to go our way.
Yeah, that's certain.
Yeah, we're gonna make you think that your democracy, you know, that you have the right to that, but at the end of the day, you actually don't.
So these issues, whether they're, you know, state, federal, regional, or local, because really, if you think about it, the local issues around here, pretty good, right? The city stuff goes pretty, it's pretty smooth, okay, it's pretty stable. It's the pervasions come from outside. They come from the regional issues, they come from the state, from the federal, right? But they all show up here at City Hall.
Yeah.
Right, you hear about all kinds of issues here.
Right.
Right, so, I think it starts here at City Hall with how do we operate so we can engender more confidence in at least what we have control over here, right? Rule of law and center and quality life and local work person. And so a lot of that is how do we operate, and the other part is how do we engage? And break them down.
That would be fascinating to see. Right, it's not something. But. We just put out a graph and actually show, this is how much money you need.
Yeah.
And while you're just too many, you know, on the staff, on the hour, on, you know, hour, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Um, on all of those outside issues, it's not that.
Yeah, it's hard to measure, because oftentimes it doesn't show up in the budget, right? It's hard to calculate the hours, but it's the amount of, you know, consternation coming in from the community and the amount of energy that that takes up.
That's why I was calculating it all.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's rather than focusing on, you know, the downtown redevelopment and, you know, the two point oh plan, parks and open spaces, and stuff that really, I mean, it's a system that really moves the needle on why the center is in great place and enhancing, preserving, protecting, uh, the things that make the center great. You're focused on this plan, the effects, on all these other issues, and it takes up so much time, and nobody understands it, like, that's what it is. So these questions, uh, this is a great discussion. But because these questions are designed to bring out, what are we spending our energy on? What keeps me up at night as a city councilman, right? And is it focused on the center stuff, where we have impact? Or are we being pulled apart by these other things, right? So, this is a good exercise, go through them, and should probably do this periodically, like, just to kind of level set on. You have, as council, and I've said this before, you guys are on. Right, your, your prime time, where you have the most impact, is when you are all sitting up here on the dais conducting people's business, where you're sitting. And so, every once in a while you need to gut check, like, are we using that time as the highest investment? Or?
Well, and now we have all the hours, then, during week, meeting and discussing, or taking meetings. And we're now, we cannot believe that, that what comes from, that such a people, or a lot of learn, from other cities, or cities too. And how can that, 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 that center? I don't think, there's something, and there's always a candidate, you know, all the extra effort. And we want it to, that's why we're on the council. They don't have to realize how much that, we're putting everything.
Yeah.
It's not that, while we're on the council, like, okay, all the other efforts that we're in just, we really care.
So I'm gonna put up here, this, we're highlighting something, and this has been on my brain, talked about with you all here, but it's the issue of, you know, community engagement. A few weeks ago, I was at the Washington City Management Association Conference, and while, every year, we have a couple of conferences. And then you'll look nice, you can go over there and you can, you know, find this up there. But that issue, that community engagement, you know, far none across the state, that is the issue. It's, in Medina, I'll tell you, like, what I hear is demographic changes, changes in how, you know, people engage, preferences, technology, that, you know, I've got this guy on council who's been in Medina forever, owned restaurants, Bellevue, uh, the real estate. And Medina days, you've heard about Medina days, which is the beginning of celebrating up there. He brings these pictures out from thirty, forty years ago, when he and his wife were sharing it, for, you know? And he's like, look, we used to have a softball, we divided the city into four different areas, and we, you know, recruited somebody to be a team captain. And they would go and you'd get these neighborhood dads that would put softball teams together, and as part of the Medina days was a big softball. They'd have like, you know, games, and then they'd have like semi-videos.
Just dads or out?
Well, we must.
Or invited, we should have.
Yeah, it was, you know, everybody, but it was your guys. Right, I feel like, yeah. But he's like, so we used to do this, used to give a thing, and now we don't even do this. We have like a little big ball tournament that's, right? But you said it was great because.
I loved it.
Yeah. Is it choppa mad?
Yeah, pickball noises, it's a big, right, it sounds like ruppers going off on a line. And nailing singles through, all over the class, right? Um, but, you know, he's like, you see, here's pictures of this guy who's a school teacher, and here's, you know, the Nordstroms, Nordstrom thing, and, you know, so it's all like pre-Microsoft money. And now, you know, post-Microsoft, lots of things changed in the past. Uh, so, you know, the council's like, how do we help people understand what makes Medina great? They're coming in, they don't want to be in China, South Asia, India, because they're techy babies. And they live on these huge states, they're all isolated from each other now. There's still little remnants of old Medina, where the council struggled with this. How do we connect with everyone? Right, how do we help people understand what's going on in the city, what the city does? And I talked to other city managers, city administrators, saying that nobody comes to meetings, nobody understands how things work. Um, I, I need a Canada in Medina, right? Because we've talked about, like, what do we do with this, we need a better website, we need more social media.
The center does a good job, I hate to say it, I really do, I sit back and I, and I, and I watch, and I'm having a hard time keeping my mouth shut right now. Canada's a great job of social media, we've got the website being rebuilt, we offer to the center university, that was highly successful, right? Yet, the, the sad part is that some people go out of that, those meetings and can't believe whatever they interpreted in their head. Uh, and then, and a lot of misinformation comes from it. We have the R Days, uh, uh, committee, and our, actually our festivals, right? And R Days was one of the largest we have ever, it was huge, I mean, merchants, merchants were.
We did fewer activities during.
Okay, we ran out of merchandise, we were running out of food, and people were didn't understand what the center is about. Our numbers for the Christmas festival are monstrous, you know, and people are learning what the center is all about, and they want to give a part of it. Funny part is, as soon as they come in, they go, oh, we shut the door for everybody else. They, we don't want anybody moving, we're gonna get a small town deal, well, you just moved here yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I went through that side.
Yeah. But I think with similar.
But, well, we, we are educating it, right? It's kind of like the, the roundoff stuff that, that took place out here in that June meeting. We've been working on this for two years, this is not something that was new, this is something that's been ongoing. We've had, uh, massive open houses, you know, six open houses, uh, stacked high, and council members are coming. We've had, uh, it's been in newsletters, I mean, we've done everything short of going door to door, right? People only care to come to these meetings, what it actually impacts their life. And, and that's it, and even then, some of them are like, eh, isn't even worth it. Would it really impact their pocketbook? That's what they show up. So I, I think that the center is doing, or is on the right track of the communication, I think we're actually playing. I look at some of these other cities, and they're not doing it. They're not doing any of the stuff we're doing.
They're not, hell, but I would say across the board, nobody is happy or feels satisfied about the community. No matter what they do, no matter how much they invest in it, it's like, no one's crackhead enough for like, why aren't we feeling this? So I think like, that's an issue that's always gonna be, or, of replying, it's like, okay, how do we bring the community along to policy issue? And some people aren't gonna come on, right?
I have a couple of points, uh, just that we have a similar structure of, we have a lot of people that live outside of city, city limits, that have lived there for a very long time. But they feel very, uh, like their voice can't be heard, because they can't vote, but they still feel like, you know, we want to include them because they're very part of this community, and, and they have a lot of property, and, and they, you know, just have family lineage, right, so we have some of that. The other thing I was gonna say is, I think the issue with Facebook is like, or social media, it's a great way to communicate, but legally, we can't talk about the actual business, maybe great, that that's what people want to hear about. We use it to say, oh, we have a meeting, or, oh, we have a Christmas festival. So people then get upset when it's like, well, what about the real issues? We want to see that right here. Sure, um, right, but I just mean, sometimes they want to see it, I just mean, their understanding that social media for us, like, kind of a, I'm not gonna play a Facebook page that's just for fun and communication, it's not for educating about, you know, those things they need to know. Yeah, but then they think that we should be doing that, because that's all where they go for their news. They don't go to NPR, they don't go to a good news source that actually reads their news, they want something.
They're really thinking about like, there's some psychology about being aware.
Yeah.
You know, what kind of, how that stimulates our brains, and why it's, it's something that's.
It's off of us for a little bit.
Well, they're focused on this.
So.
So you can.
I think Sam.
Everybody needs their turn in the barrel, right?
I wasn't talking about, what, listen, I just, I belong to two of this kind of loose group of about fifteen ladies, and we kind of get together about once a month. Got together at night, since last Tuesday. And what do we do, we generate, I'm like, people, and they all start talking about the girls, every time I'm there, of course, and all this personal city councilwoman. And she has all their questions. And so they're going on and on and on about the girls, or then this one lady that's sitting in, and she even breaks away, they're still talking about, I've lived here twenty-five years, da-da-da, and she talking, and she said, I've lived here fifty years. I live three miles outside of the city limits, and I don't get a vote, and I don't own the girls. I'm one of the city to me like it was fifteen years ago. And these women, I don't even have to listen to them, they haven't lived here that long. And I'm just like.
And the perspective.
Yes, because that shows you exactly where. Yes, because that shows you exactly where, you know, they don't wanna change, you know? They want it to be like their moms and dads and everybody had it, and that's, that's nostalgic and that feels good to them because that feels like their own little town that they grew up in, and that makes them feel safe.
That would be a great, and a cost, and everything will stay the same.
Exactly, can I go buy milk for twenty-five cents?
A lot of this, you're, it's like a lot of... Yeah. And here, here's just...
Yes.
We prefer stability, we feel comfortable with what was. But zoom out, reality is, like, I don't have the same body that I had thirty years ago, right? There are these, you know, fundamental principles of existing, that's, you know, laws of thermodynamics, entropy, things wear out, right? They're going to wear out.
So when they move out, that's the last time, you don't own the property, right? And, you know, when we moved here, we had to buy this property, we had to buy somebody else, and they wanted to sell it.
And I have two of the Center University folks here. And, uh, you remember, what I repeated over and over is that there are two things that are, are just natural phenomena, we have no control, we can't stop it, right? It's like standing in front of a dam that's breaking and looking, oh, damn. And if anything, that stuff wears out over time, nothing lasts forever. And the other is broken. You cannot stop growth because that requires you to intervene into human reproduction and migration patterns, right?
How much, right? Yeah, yeah.
You know, China is a great example, by the way, of the tendency to intervene in that process. The one child policy from the nineteen fifty, right? And you look at the spillover effect of that, how, you know, infanticide female infants because male infants were poor. And then they didn't have enough, you know, for, they didn't have the balance of male to female for, uh, you know, family formation. And so they started kidnapping women from other countries, right? It's, it's just, it's crazy. The way we tried to intervene in the systems of humans, thinking that we had control, is that standing in front of the dam. No, but we can manage it. So if we don't manage it, it becomes a mess. And down the road, you're trying to fix stuff that your, the, the poorpoppers should have been managing, begin with, right? So that's, that's our job, is to be responsible and manage it and make sure that it's successful next year. The state says you have to grow, you have to be responsive to that natural phenomenon. And so they give you tools so that you can manage it. And what I told the Center University folks is, you know, growth is gonna happen. There are cities out there of eighty thousand people that feel like small towns. And there are cities out there of five thousand people that feel gross and spirally disoriented. So it's all about giving that growth a place to go and a form to take. And you have the tools to do it, statute gives you some tools. I think we're doing a great job of it, actually, we also really do, I think, that we're pushing for that approach function. We're not pushing in this direction, you know, because there's certain limitations. I think the Center is on the right track, I really do. Now we're gonna have months to run, sure, and are we gonna make the most perfect decisions? No, we're human, right? Nobody can do that. But I think that the roughs at the Center, the council, even, uh, the cities, all of them, are in the right direction. Yeah, I really, truly do, we're, we're thinking about the future. We're setting up the next generation force and stuff. And still try to keep that same small town people. I don't know if that'll ever stay that way, you know, I can't, I can tell you from where we're at now in the next ten years, we're not exploding like rich kids. Maybe going out of sports junction, but now here, we're still gonna be the Center.
And we haven't grown like they've grown, which I'm thankful, it's surprising, but then I hope it all hasn't just...
Right. And they have, you know, they're rich, they don't pay twenty, thirty dollars for every bridge. We don't wanna have to do land acquisition and, uh, right of ways for, uh, new roads to expand it, or get more. I mean, it just, it doesn't, the Center, they don't, they're... The cardiologists are the example, that's for reason, right? Because huge land use expansion, take it back, what, fifteen, twenty years? And it's all such, I was gonna say, twenty-seven years. And then you look at, like, all the streets coming, before they built the roundabouts. You know, they hadn't built the roundabouts because cardiologists said, "You have a blockage there," right? And, and now they're having to expand Bible One, and that's been on radar for a long time. They had to rebuild the freeway energy. And so all these things were, hey, we're using the land this way, and we're just building that on the system. And they, they've been working at it, and they've been investing, and it's definitely been a challenge. Still happening, it, it's gonna be a challenge, right? They're having, you can't fit them on all their systems that support that level of growth. But back to Vern, right? So when we tell someone who says, "Uh, I want things with..." Like, how do you...
I've talked to this woman over and over, she, and she doesn't even come half the time to our group that gets together because she can't claim that these women are holding every twenty-five or thirty years. And I don't know why she's so stuck, I mean, she's kind of turned to me, why is she so stuck in the past? But when they were moved here, she worked at the post office, her husband worked at P E S, whatever that is. Yeah. And she went like that little, I don't, I didn't even look it up, it's been, it was fifty years ago, I don't know. What, where am I? And she said, "They were so close, and everybody knew everybody," and I said, "Well, I..."
It was on her favor.
That's because they had more... That's why she knew.
And everybody worked P E S.
Yeah, exactly. These women, everybody knew each other, you know, but they let the city die, so... I mean, I'm crying, and it was...
That's right.
But I, I, I keep talking to her, she'll call me, and she just wants to go on and on and on, and she's so stuck in the past. And just, and she goes with Slovakia, or, you know, because she has, you know, a whole, you know, family there. "Oh, and Slovakia, there's still, like, it used to be here," but she said, "I see in another fifty years, though, it probably gets up to us," and, you know? I'm like, "Why would you move to a council office or something then if that bothered you that much," you know?
Yeah, countries in Europe, you know, Japan, Italy, I'm not sure about Slovakia, but, you know, lots of countries in Europe, developed countries, you know, and this is a great example, have been grappling with making population growth. It's not a different dynamic, because society can, you know, we're not here, which is really steady for the population growth.
People don't realize that need population, really conscious of that, they don't look at the representation of us.
Well, that's what Center and we have, that issue, we have six, six cities.
Uh, thirty, forty, I think.
Well...
So, uh, back down.
Yeah, I don't like it, now it's more economic, what's going on in the world. Um, so we're gonna see it start to mend, and also get into...
Yeah, engagement, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's put it on the ground, and it's also impacts how comfortable people are in going out there and getting engaged. And right now, we're in a scenario where people aren't that comfortable to go out there because, well, the limited conversations that you might want to have outside of politics, religion, or anything. And, you know, I, we have to really think about that, and so also how this, the city, or social media, and our attempts to get people past those barriers, to rebuild and, and get them to understand.
These things have changed.
Yeah.
How we engage in life and society. And so what I tell my council member, who's, who's come up on how the Medina Days was, you know, thirty, forty years ago, when he was playing softball with Nordstrom, is the things have changed, right? And the, the people who are forming families and households now grew up with these. And grew up engaging in society in a vastly different way than when I was a kid or when he was a kid. And so we could say, "We wanna go back to the clock," that's standing for that dam.
Well, and this bitch being a politician, and this gal lately, that, you know, that she's a Christian and she puts on all this, the politicians, and I can run and use that on her, is like, "Well, then are you, right? Are you asking God, what is it that you conversely do bring yourself joy or to, you know, give a different mentality? Because you're not living in joy, you're, you still wanna live fifty years ago." And I couldn't really blame her because, you know, one on one, not just filling the rest of it.
That's been for all lifestyle, it's unfortunate. And it's really sad, but that's, you know, the struggle that you're in that with any community.
Yeah. Well, you said it's like a growth mindset.
So you can't get hung up on, on how we, whether or not we're gonna be able to change the DNA in that individual person. You just keep moving forward and try to get people to at least think a little more open-minded and, you know, find some positive aspect that they may be willing to...
I don't, I don't think...
Some people are just...
I think that's what I just said, there are certain things you...
But I hope so, I mean, I hope it's...
Back to this issue that Franklin, where they're at, you, you've made reasonable best efforts. You know, leadership says you would want it.
Yeah, it's always run towards us.
This, this is a lot about leading a lot of horses to water and then watching them die at first, that we're wrong.
I think it's important too, that when it comes to big issues, that when we're having those meetings, and you have all these people in here that are remembering in those moments that we're not gonna get emotionally, you know, just because they're all charging us, it's like, we're about to vote on something, I'd like to see everyone is here, you know, with this strong emotion, but I'm not gonna let that skew the importance of this vote and everything that's behind it, because your emotion is in front of me, and that is a lot, and it's like, but what is really going on in the background, that's what we have to focus on and not letting that...
Your responsibility as leaders is to help people feel heard.
Yes.
And to give them that opportunity, reasonable opportunity to feel heard. And, and then take the sum total of the record, what you know, for your issue, and make the best...
Yeah, but not change policy right at the end, because all of a sudden you have this emotional, you know, outrage. Yeah. That's odd.
I think that people don't realize too, that if you live in the city, they can be impacted by the city in different ways. But it's people that live in the city that pay the taxes in the city that are ones that are gonna have, they're the ones that have the vote on how things actually change, the vote in the city.
You're right, but at the same time, we, and I think everybody's been spot on with the, kind of, circling on the, on the outside of...
There are some recurring themes here.
Issues are, yeah, uh, with, with community engagement, and our responsibility to constitute it is very, very important. But we also have a responsibility to represent, protect, and not make the city worse. And what you said, Melissa, I think was, was spot on, but I think we've all done the opposite at times, which is, we, we hear, we hear opinions of a very small amount of very vocal people and fall into the trap of, "That's the opinion of the majority," and we don't necessarily vote all the time on what's really best for the city, the majority of the city.
I think sometimes, we, there can be a way we go about it.
Yeah.
Not necessarily go the one, it's how we should go down. It's the fact that, um, when we take that vote, I think most people know how all of us are gonna vote. Someone, in some cases, can also be the voice for that small group of people, you know, we're listening, we understand that. And, and we're still way reacting to our, our long-term, you know, how we plan. Um, so we're not trying to hold those, you know? So even if somebody...
It's different for...
It's not exactly what you mean, they, they don't agree, but also that means we're still sending different messages to all of the people.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, I've seen us do that a few times, I've seen you do that, I've seen Sean do that, where you go to know about something that he didn't a little bit because he knew it was still somewhat of a safe going through, because he did want it.
It was like, they were, they were sure that people knew, they were listening and hearing, so, yeah.
Exactly, it was like a nice way of saying, you know, we can...
And I can say also, something that we can take more weight in how we plan our lives and how we plan agendas and... But you know what's gonna be a really hot contentious issue, is bringing people in. We all need to be there.
Yeah, of course.
We can't do it like, in this business right now. I mean, yes, we're trying to make the, make the effort to be a part of the group to it, but to the people that come here, they take, they take that.
Yeah, of course, I agree.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
Read the future of some of that stuff.
I know, I was gonna say, I was just...
Oh, but...
Especially if some people...
You know, that particular topic is best...
I, we did not, we actually did not, I wouldn't, we've been working on it for two years.
Yes.
That's why...
The number of people that finally see their add-ons, and it's gonna be, they're having to know, that gets them, you know, very, very...
We make decisions like that, that didn't mean that are like that, so I'm not understanding where...
But we'd already had people that required meetings, so knew the way that the...
I agree with Melissa, we, we should have been there, and we talked about it a lot, that it wasn't approved by, that plan wasn't approved by the planning commission until nineteen forty-two. But the, but it was due to the county on that Monday, the following day. Well, and we talked about that, but what we decided was that we stand a better chance of turning in a management plan to the county to not allow them to continue to, we didn't want to delay it, knowing the failure.
Actually, but, but, you can take that stand, out of the ability, you know, the pool...
I should be over it, I, we should, we would be.
And I think that, because you guys were out of conference, you went on vacation, you were out of it, and that's where I think it's...
That was an exploration, you know, and they pushed it off, really demonstrated.
I agree, it was, it was, it was, I think there's a lot of things at play, and I don't get any...
And that's just my personal opinion, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have changed what would have happened, you know, in the last few years. That it'd be still at the same...
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, it still sounds like DNA stuff, it's bonded for lots of different reasons. It's all connected. What we want is to be able to have a good process to arrive with a policy decision, everyone shows up, everyone's prepared, everyone's engaged. Uh, but sometimes the deadlines themselves come within themselves. Uh, when you do comp plan and stuff, you do, you touch GMA stuff, you have that sixty-day commerce, Department of Commerce review, right? So you work and work and work, and that process, and then the, uh, planning commission comes up with something, they give the council, council's working with it, uh, you've got, Commerce has their sixty-day rights review, and then they comment, and then you might have to change it, and meanwhile, there's this looming deadline of dogs. Otherwise, some, like in Medina States on the middle housing, if we didn't get that done by the end of June, then the state defaults, like, uh, model organs would have applied to us, and that would have been a disaster. So you sort of accept the protections of what you have in front of you to try to head off something. You know, and I, and I think, and I like one thing too, it's like, these are giant issues, man. It's kind of based a lot on capability, like, do you think based on the need that we have? So it's like, I mean, if everybody was fully engaged all the time, and like, they were here telling us what they, what they thought, you have a lot of, a lot of, you feel a lot of shock about things, that... you have a lot of, a lot of, you have a lot of strongly about things, but, but it's a lot, it's not just people in this room, everyone, all of a sudden, right here, you know? About all one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you know?
And staff.
Yeah, so like, it's, it's creepy to think that, you know, once a year that we get a room full of people, you know, are gonna come in and change the whole dynamic of the city, because that's the day they decide to show up. So, I mean, I'm empathetic to it, but, or sympathetic, but like, it's also.
Earlier, you brought up, uh, the constitutional aspect of a lot of this. And I think that's important to go over, especially when it comes to development. Because this then is big, it covers a lot of different topics, but one of them is, is to process, one of them is just compensation. Well, being a piece of private property, like Melissa, we don't want our place moved here. It's, it belongs to, to you, whether you owe, whether you owe money to the bank or not, it's, it's your property. And with some restrictions, you can do what you want with it, right? And a lot of times, unless you're, yeah, that's part of the, that's part of the restriction. But it's, it's not, it's not the role of the city to tell somebody or what they can do with their property, or who they can sell it to. Unless the city can afford to buy that piece of property at a fair value and keep it for themselves for a couple of years. We can't, we can't do that. And.
Well, except if that property didn't break down, and they, at the time of sale, went to sell it to different somebody, then that property really wouldn't have passed.
Definitely, there's rules for the policies.
But a new owner can, can apply for, and request some change based on what it is that they want to do with that property. And the Growth Management Act may allow them to do that.
Maybe.
And we've got.
I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of principles involved there, like where you have to, uh, weigh and minimize and mitigate growth impacts. Especially in the mountains. So, like, if you're gonna, you have a single family area, and, uh, you know, Riverside Estates is a big thing. Where you had, uh, where Dennis Nutbrock lives, that, uh, but you have homeowners association that's in the UGA, but outside the city. And Riverside was developed, it was back in, like, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, they came up with the plan, appealed by that homeowner association. And so, a directive from court in that case was the lots adjacent to, immediately adjacent to that homeowners association had to be bigger lots. To attenuate density. So, it was like, they had these big lots, then what the developer proposed had to be enlarged right next to it. And then they could step down to smaller, more dense buildings. So, you know, one of the parts of the GMA is that changing the density in the area, that you have to sort of attenuate that density of the projects. Other single band.
And that's one of the good things about the GMA that they had, that its intent was, but the implementation of the GMA is, that's the thing that's staying. I think something else that gets overlooked is residential development. It makes money for the city upfront, but after that, it's a resource loss, right?
Yes.
It doesn't provide any ongoing income like business development does. And you can see locally, with a larger city, annexes areas, they go right around the housing developments, and then they go up and take Costco and Home Depot and that's the background. And because of the, because of the tax base and the resources, and then the residential areas are, are stuffed with.
Services. And, and there's a lot of, a lot of sub-tenancy to that, which is, you know, Clark County, unincorporated Clark County, what, at one time, was the fifth, fourth, fifth, sixth, largest city in the state of Washington. It was all Vancouver, UTA, Hazel Dell, Sandy Creek, all the way across the like, orders. And huge population. It was all like, you know, the county was pursuing growth policies that were really driven by interest of homeowners. Going to subdivision, strip mall, that, all of it, right? A lot of one-time revenue with the county. Uh, that paid for a lot of things, right? Help fund the Sheriff's Department for things, the largest general fund department in the county. And, but then the county had to deliver services, right? So you build rooftops, and you did that one-time revenue, but now you gotta deliver services associated. And challenge is, is in GMA, there's this idea, which isn't strictly enforced, which is that counties and cities are supposed to plan together. And so Vancouver really should have had to say, and okay, you're expanding the urban growth fabric to accommodate a reasonable assumption of population growth. Let's work together so that what's zoned and developed there, which, you know, GMA said will ultimately be turned over to the city of Vancouver in the annexation process, similarly on the line, let's make sure that that's consistent with what the city of Vancouver's vision is for that growth, how we want growth. And so, instead, you know, there was Royce Pollard, years and years ago, he wanted to just, hey, we're gonna annex everything in the UGA, and we're gonna be the, I think, third largest city in the state, that's what he was doing. And Betty C. Morris and Royce, but it, right, so she gets with people in Hazel Dell, and says, hey, why don't you incorporate the city? And so, city didn't back off. That's why the way is how we have points communities, West Development, the Dyna, not just Point Zero, Point by Hill, is they didn't wanna be that. Just, you know, more developed, neighborhood developed. So they incorporated, right, to the sense of, they do that because they want to retain control over their local identity. But Hazel Dell didn't wanna, they weren't paying. So lots of interesting dynamics related to growth. But yeah, Vancouver, in that annexation, they went, well, here's a way to solve the revenue problem. Let's, you know, shoehorn up the, the west side to two oh five, and pick up as few rooftops as possible above Womper, Womper, Home Depot, and Costco. Huge commercial.
They did the same thing along Forkland, where the, the annexation line wasn't the road, it was the property lines behind the, the business, the commercial properties along Forkland. So, but I think that's where, yeah, one of our successes this last year was, was the downtown Portnoy plan, and the Dinkley plan, because it provided for both residential aspect that were required to be by the GMA, but it also provides for that, that small business places, so that there is some additional revenue coming in. Because we know there's still gonna be challenges up at the junction. And even with the, the land that's already designated as, as.
Already designated, like, ads are already in order, already in order.
Uh.
Already.
It is, but nobody building them today, so there's things that. Did see they started cleaning it up, the green tractor and stuff, so it's on its way, but, uh.
And so, because it's a revenue source, I mean, so, a lot of, a lot of you guys were on council at the time. Because when you guys came on, you got COVID money, and the police were, uh, down to enough personnel that the cost was something, right? So the, the city wasn't leaving money. But in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, as a matter of fact, Jeff, several times, we were five years up looking at papers. We were done, we were done in five years.
See.
I, I don't know. I don't want to find out, I don't want to find out.
You just move out, you can't, you can't.
You just, uh, you just move on. Oh, papers in Kansas, that were, man, uh, built. So, the city, the city, like, way, they'll receive an asset, need, uh, you know, you don't get to come to there.
Yeah, he does.
He owns a hotel.
Yeah, I know, he's like, I'm gonna be there.
Yeah. Yeah, so, to your credit, you know, the, and that's, that's maybe the frustrating part, is you're people going around, oh, they just wanna grow the city, and they wanna have growth. Our more houses, they don't know markets up here. It's like, they'll, they'll really be dealt with, or required actions planned for it, but we'd rather have some commercial and industrial.
Yeah.
What that type of stuff, and that's why we push that direction.
Well, on the default, always, well, the council in the bear, so. Pockets.
Oh, yeah, I love that one.
Which, if that was, if that was true. Well, I'm not, we probably wouldn't still sit here.
Yeah, exactly.
This is where the council and, and myself as well, is capriciously immoral, is we know where the property's gonna go. You know, we know where people are building and doing such, but we, we don't go and just purchase it right next to it, and then turn it on a pole, not making trillions of dollars, not making decisions like that. So, you know, probably, I would, people would recognize that. We're not the Nancy Pelosi's or whatever, the best investors ever.
Those stocks.
You know, we're, we're actually doing what's best for the city.
And I was.
I think we work differently.
Oh, yeah, totally, I know, you work down here, and I was thinking, I don't know, do you think, attend, so my apologies, but on the, uh, uh, classes that you have, that have city functions, you have, right, you know, I was thinking, would it be beneficial to do something like GMA? You know, it's like, just make me get money. I mean, I barely know anything, but what I've been saying is explaining to the community. I know, but I thought if you wanted to say that, so it's like, no, it's like, it doesn't happen, but it's a serious thing.
Make a book, we sell it.
Yes, I totally agree, I have, you know, your dummies down there, because I so love the books.
And I covered that in, uh, the third, the third percent of you received session in, 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 so we covered that.
And you talked about that, okay.
Very kind of specific to the center of growth management and how all that works. But there is, uh, Commerce does, times a year, I think, a short course. And it covers the growth and that, very, very useful, um, workshop that they go around the state.
I just mean, inviting the public as well, so that they, okay, great, okay, yeah, because I think that some of that, we talked about that up there in the stage, you know, everybody really even understands that, and understands that those are certain, you know, bylaws or what, that we have to live by. So, that they don't have to get so, huh, tough, but.
Right, cool.
I understand. I watched the bathroom, that was it, get out.
I was done anyway.
Get out.
Oh, you're gonna stop.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna talk about.
Well, please.
Yeah, see, this, I know you don't leave, because this is when they come up with bright ideas for you to do.
That's when you think of.
I don't.
Yeah, actually, it's where we're going, yeah.
This is where people get assignments.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's pretty common, everything we're talking about, so. So when I was talking about what we were doing, yeah, we were, you know, other, they are.
That's, I don't think.
Well, yeah, well, I'll talk to, um, it's not that. It, it feels intuitive, but a lot of people out there figures out.
Yeah, and maybe they don't have that, I, I don't know, well, if, if you don't. I mean, you don't even, about, uh, maybe, if you don't think, you don't have the ambition, you can't, you know, and if you only have the fee, immigration costs, which give out. Okay, you're sitting out, you know, they should. See, now, now, now you're lost, and you're, you know, yeah, if you find that, that's, well, yeah, I'm a hundred percent sure that, that they have that ambition. Well, because they're, they're high given more, you know? Or they're not good numbers, and they don't want.
Right, yeah. Their kids are probably just buying.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's what we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good coffee, it is.
Is it really?
No, you, you think so? You think that's good coffee?
Yeah.
It's just.
Oh, why?
Olders remember.
Exactly. Dude, that's my first campaign, I wouldn't even drink that campaign.
Really? You wanna be poo poo stuff.
I want beautiful poo poo stuff.
Yeah. It actually, yeah, yeah, I'm a lot of people, we're in this county, except for at R5, and now it's been Cooper House, like, that's.
My, my first stop, I'm talking to people, they go, it's my, yeah.
Coffee.
God.
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah.
I did a couple of coffee, and they go, just like last night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Black rising, of course.
Yeah, of course, my, I, I, I just, yeah.
Have you been to one, coffee, any before?
I have, they have good coffee as well.
I tried all.
Puffins is good as well, and Revive, I mean, the Revive.
That's why I haven't been.
It's, yeah, that's probably the best, yeah, coffee. No, but Red Leaf, Red Leaf is my favorite.
I, we like cash.
There's just not, um, yes, they have the coffee as well. Did they? Oh, look, now. They have the coffee too.
I don't know, I never, I swear to God.
Did you have like, so they're, like, in it? Like a.
Yeah.
It's like that, because I'm making coffee in general, and like, it's actually bad milk.
I was so scared. Like, coffee's my way too.
Yeah, Puffin's is. Yeah, the Puffin's is just so far away, you know, it's like, when you live in a center, it's like, I just wanna go again, but I live, I work within Vancouver, but even from my house to there, like, just, it's good coffee.
Yeah, I was gonna be fun a little bit, I just, it's very relaxing.
Oh, thanks, where do you?
It was.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I get a little bit chilled, I'm like, every weekend, I'd be like, running around, trying to.
Oh, fine, yeah.
It was really fun, but I was chilled.
Oh, I know, love it, always like, eh.
I like love dogs.
It's okay, it's, it's, yeah, she's very nice, I feel her, yeah, exactly, and it's been there forever, and I, they are the Puffins at Starbucks, the Visi, yeah, and that part.
But the recent deal with the theater downtown was like, the coffee shop, I wish you would have. My, my friends have lived over thirty years now, I would say like, really, like, the.
Yes.
Coffee shop, they do their coffee, they don't have to.
Yeah, they have the, it's like, you're almost changing, like, a, like, out of this world party, yeah, it's. They said downtown's like.
Just here, here to clarify, here's what is, as.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my. They got me, they got me. Yeah, yeah. I didn't know it was right, once the. I didn't know it was right once, uh, she had. My cheese. Yeah.
Would they play with me?
Yeah, I don't mind anybody concession. Yeah.
Well, I, I'm wondering if we.
Funny, I did, twice, we're in the last city, that was.
Yeah.
You guys posted on Facebook, and I know somebody asked.
Yeah.
You know. Yeah.
But there's no.
Yeah.
This, this is really, really bitter.
So.
Or now, you said, you know, you keep out.
I know, I was hoping you could eat here, actually, because I thought it was. See the process.
So it's like the secret, they go.
Yeah.
He can see your name. He didn't, he didn't, and I tried to read some numbers out of, I, he was, he was giving me numbers, but it weren't the numbers I was.
We're young.
Here, how many on this class, you know? And they, they just talked to Sean, they should have, they should have, they, maybe they don't wanna give it out, and I, I believe numbers are terrible.
But I guess what is it now, it's not, it's like, if the numbers are. Well, it's not gonna happen, it's. Right, that's what I'm saying, they're so gonna collect the same amount of money, even if they tell us how much we're writing, right? I mean, I'm. I mean, because they don't wanna, they don't wanna like, say.
Yeah, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, sure, I brought up cat, you know? You know, yeah, they, they're still not running up now, you know?
Yeah, I've had to. Right. So it's, man, like, it's, uh, about one of them, it's designed now.
Yeah, it's like conspiracy stuff, yeah, like, they use it, uh, the money, yeah, it's worth it, so it's, uh, it's, uh, by.
Do you hear, yeah, like, that? Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, for, for, she's so amazing, you know, I mean, she's with the line. That is, that is, that is, there's no, there's no like, there's everything, you can't, you can't help that, right? Did you figure, did you run home? Get your stuff? No.
He forgot, thank you.
Well, that's probably why. If you had to choose, one or the other, oh. Sitting in a bunch of, or. Well, we were. Oh. Okay, that'll, so, you're, you're bigger guys, you probably. You're not aware of the, uh, what is some way. Good special. Like how we're seeing you, we're doing things, uh, you're all kind of teenagers. Yeah? Yeah. I'm starting to walk into the girls' bathroom because I was looking, I'm like, well, this is our bathroom.
What a big.
They're all the holders.
Right. I know, but I was thinking about what we were talking about. Like, oh, oh, I'm an offer.
That's.
Also.
You see, love the.
I just want to learn my mom's. I'm officially, I'm officially. Yeah, I like to, we all want to look out here. Inversing to somebody, you want to wait or? No, I'm gonna go back. Yeah, awesome, though. Are we logging out or what?
I'm volunteering at the museum.
Oh, nice.
Oh, I didn't, well.
I like your hat.
Yeah, well, that's my uncle Mark.
I have the sheriff's, the mayor's keeper.
Yeah. And this, this museum, the pictures in the museum, and, uh, Amboy, and, uh, he's my mom's oldest brother. And, uh. Yeah. What? Yeah, what? And you, you probably didn't see the, the cigarette, the.
Thank you.
No, that's not my part.
Oh, you, oh, you look just like him.
Well, thanks.
All right, here, I'm just gonna run through them pretty quick, a lot of the. That way you see a lot of stuff, there is a lot of, it's obvious that you be covered, yeah.
I only buy them two.
Right. So, some of the issues that have come up in the past six months, these are all gonna be tied together for the rest of the question. I, I feel that communication from the city has been helping, and I also think that like, community growth has been, as well, I think that we're on the right track. Um, it showed by the engagement that we've received, not just in our open houses, but even in our community. Right? We, we have plenty of people coming through the ribbons, I mean, certainly, we have one for the class, uh, we have one for the listener university. I mean, people will actually, when we first were implementing this, I didn't even know, that said something like, oh, you're gonna be likely to get one or two. And one would be out, probably can't believe the other, right? We had this room filled. It was amazing. It was awesome. So I think we are on the right track. Um, some of the, uh, issues that have come up the last six months that I have, uh, have been a little shocking to me, uh, deals on wheels, there's been some local community things that have, that are happening, that we're working diligently on, uh, Hannah has taken help, but maybe, uh, those, those will have to go into a, in that conversation at another time. Um, I think the misinformation, I think the misinformation has been probably the most shocking.
Yeah.
Because I think that we, we have really gone above and beyond on the outreach. I mean, you know, not just each of you talking to citizens or residents, but like, we had, uh, I forget her name, she's only here short, right? But as an associate, I have to run, uh, she's on that horse skirt from how, it was snowing out, it was crazy. And she was, she even sat out there during the, uh, Christmas festival, was educating people, get the opinion, eat that. She went to, uh, another city, she got a higher position. Um, but we put these people in these places that community events, also, we put stuff on the reader board, or having, like I said, I think it was six open houses. You know, I, I, so.
I'll see a reader board.
You know, in the, in the, in the community, um, the, the, the listener university gave the information, yet for some reason, some people, I don't know if it's just the way they interpret things, but they keep coming up with different, or, or a different interpretation of actually what we're saying. And I think that's caused along the problems, right? If you take the, uh, oh, I forget the developer that was being posed up behind the arthouse. And, and how all of them came out of woodwork, and they think that they, they just started voicing it, and you guys think changes on things, when there's certain laws that have to be followed, right? And then we have to tell them, you can't do that stuff, because it, what it does is, is, uh, uh, can, uh, tame the jury, so to speak, right? I can't think of a word for it. And, and they still didn't wanna listen to this act. It was like, like, we're giving you the facts, if you give this up, or keep doing this, we're gonna be in serious trouble, we'd litigation against the city at this point.
Yeah.
And, you know, and we tried to, um, educate people all that, and I thought we did a good job, but I think I was more shocked at the, the misinformation of everything that's taking place. Some of the things that I'm, uh, happy about, then, you know, I can't even just give you what, what issues have taken most of my time and energy, because they are so vast, right? This job actually cost me. I don't make money out of this job, I actually, I pay for my own trips, I do all that. I don't put that on the city, because the city didn't have the money at the time. They're actually, the city's doing okay now, but I still have that moral promise, I guess, I, I don't know. Um, oh, we've been awarded funds, you know, Breezy Creek is completely paid for, over thirteen million dollars. Over thirteen million, uh, shared use cap, we were one million dollars shy, or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars shy of that. The, the downtown, we've been awarded money, you know, I'm proud of the, the land acquisitions that we've done, and, and how that's gonna shape out and help the city grow and come together more. Um, one of the big things that was huge to the city, that people just, I don't think grasp, how much it's gonna impact us, but our wastewater plant is in dire shape. I mean, dire shape, we, we are stressed on it, Racy's stressed on it, Bond's stressed on it, the employees down there are stressed on it. We're talking about a plan that just pays back interest on the loan to the city. Not really a, uh, a, uh, self-supporting instinct at this point, right? Because we're needing all this equipment that's twenty-some years old, that is aged out, we're trying to fix stuff, uh, we've looked for used parts to come in, we're having to manufacture our own type of fixes to it. And so, you know, knowing that. We're sorry. Let's, let's come back to it.
Okay.
We'll, I know, you're, you're, you know. Oh, well, you know, and then turn around, and we've got a pipeline that can't be used all the way to tribe. That helps us become viable, right? We couldn't use that. So one of the things that was, you know, that took up some time, I was driving up to Olympia to testify in front of the senate. You know, in, in, help pushing this law that we tax, and we did this with bipartisan support, we had unanimous vote. And both at the, uh, uh, senate and the house, I mean, it was unanimous. So, and we got even future wise, which you already know about future wise, back. And we did it. This law is actually gonna help us become viable down at that plant, with the services to the tribe, and with what we're proposing, they're going to help pay for all these upgrades to the, to the plant. And so we've been planning this out, um, and I think that right now we're at three point two million, we don't have, we, we are four point two million, we, we have three million then to set off the side of the plant, that's it. Right, so this is gonna, it's gonna be a great unison to actually work together, and then we can actually have a plant that is gonna be sustained for the next twenty years. And continue to be able to pay back not only the interest, but now the loan. Fifteen million dollars that still owes the city. And that's huge, you know, it's huge. Um, and it's happened, and it's happened because this little town led the way in making that law, go first, pushing that law to go. Wasn't just the barn owl and Ron and all of them, it was this little town that really made the push. And then we got them on board, and they went to town. So we, we do a lot of ground, I don't want it to come across, we don't, because if it wasn't for them, it wouldn't have passed, right? And then the tribe, the tribe also showed up, like, yeah, this is the way we wanna go. It makes sense, it makes sense, not just for the viability of our plant, but also theirs up there, where if we're not, like, more waste. Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, no, they have the right to actually build another plant. It takes up more property, that's right, and it's also injecting, it's also injecting mutual benefit, mutual benefit. Yeah. So, and you need rebase to pay for utilities, right? So, it, it, it's, I'm just proud to see that it, it, it's taken shape and actually, and that stuff that I'm very proud, you know, all of the work, funds, the law. Uh, I, I feel that our planning for future growth is actually on the right track. Now, we have some bumps, certain bumps, uh, and I think, are we getting continued at bumps? Yeah, of course, we're, we're human, we're, we're not perfect. Uh, the thing that a lot of people don't understand is that you can't do this without a council that are in unison, right? If you have a divided council, a lot of the stuff, that's, that's for, so the council's been instrument, instrumental in, in making this work. The, what I'd like to see gone differently, I'd like to see, you know, because the public gets heated in, you know, like that, uh, uh, that development stuff, and they get really heated, and they're not given the same respect that we're given. That is frustrating, right? I, I have a, I have a hard time with that. Um, it's something that I'd like to see a little bit better would be closer, uh, tighter version. I like this, let's see us even closer, wherever I'm at now. You know, maybe somebody, well, you know, maybe somebody's attending the, the council meetings, or their, their council meetings, even practice, or, they're just like they do here, they kind of, they're watching, we're. We're working closely on some field stuff, so we're, we're, I would personally like to see us, uh, creating a student council and maybe, uh, a junior council meeting type situation, where we're learning how government actually works. Without, you know, make a whole opposition or anything that, uh, could be accepted. Yeah.
Like, the lions, like, the little lion.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
But it's like, you know, I, I think that we need to have, like, high schoolers coming in and learning how the student, uh, or how government works and being a part of it, right? They don't, they don't need to make the decision, but maybe we have long meetings, they're sitting there, right? Because those are our future leaders, these are the people that are gonna lead this beginning and other communities across the country. And I think we need to nurture them, I think we need to, uh, set them up for success. You know, when I got on the council, I didn't, yeah, not house, you know, it was so much.
But you.
You dug in.
It's dug in.
Yeah, I do, I do my homework.
I mean, you know, we have to be honest and not about ourselves that we came on, you know, on into our offices.
Don't care. Yeah.
I, I tell you, like, I have this kind of set of questions, like, like these, that I like to ask when I work with city councils, and one of them was like, what did you think about how the city worked, or what was going on before you joined the council? Right? Because it's that reflection on, oh, yeah, I had these ideas, but they were based on wrong information, or ragged information, or assumptions, or whatever it was. Um, so Shannon Roberts was a council member in Kansas, and when I became city administrator there, entered the city administrator, I facilitated my first, you know, uh, retreat with the city council there, and I asked these questions. And Shannon said, well, when I were in for council, we went to a whole bondage, you know, in Kansas back in twenty nineteen or something, right? She said, I thought backroom dealing going on, and smoke bill, you know, all this kind of conspiracy stuff, and then I got on council, and you have the whole EMA and public records app, and you have to end up with this, you know, in the open, I figured out their farm game, backrooms. And then actually, all these council colleagues that I had, and I was very critical of them for, I ran, and before I got on council, but I was very critical of them, and how they affected themselves, and questioned their character. And now that I've learned about how things work, learned about how councils have to do their work, and I've learned about my council colleagues and worked with them, and understood. My perspective changed, right?
Right.
But it did change when they got on, so that's been the challenge, and that's what we're looking at university, you know.
Yeah, it's not everybody can go on council.
Even then, we're always. We can move forward, some of those, but why they don't know face to face. You're too wrong, basically. And you have to remember, the drivers, right, what we get sucked into, um, abyss of. We have to remember the drivers behind what we get sucked into, um, in this situation. You know, if it's a topic that we were really keeping about ourselves, we tend to give significant input.
Sure.
But yet, I mean, it's the opposite, another issue that we may have. Just there and there, trying to figure out how do we get enough to turn around? But in the end, we all learn in different ways, so no one can pull out in different time periods. And it gets back to, you know, that knowledge level. When it clicks in, and when did the pride get satisfied, they acknowledge pride, it's like stupid. To get sucked into it, then, and then move on, move forward.
Well, I think I'm a great example of that because of everything that happened with my business. And from the beginning of why I even ran the city council. So I think I, I didn't come in here at every meeting still holding on to past and it pissed off. Because that's how I, that's how somebody who's not a growth mindset and say, oh, I'm a learner and I'm educating myself and I'm realizing that those feelings that I had when I was a homeowner on a private street, running a small business in a small town, stealing off the paperwork, doing what I was supposed to. And then, you know, eleven years later, my mayor saying you need to, you know, basically getting a lawyer and pushing me off, you know.
And it was because you're just, you're prone to the side, you're at fun and you can go to school, they tend to.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is the question that we're talking about is that process of changing something, right? I'm not still, even, even six months into this, I never was angry up there and, and that. Do I understand that the prior mayor had probably different emotions and knew some of the, the legal city, um, team in an inappropriate way to push his own personal whatever? Yes, I do believe that and I will still believe that, but I'm not holding any resentment towards the growth of this city. As I learn the process and I'm educating myself, I'm going, okay, I get that now. Did he have to do some of those things? No. But I understand the processes now we can see. And of course, my respect and opinion have changed of all of how a city runs.
Because you're educated somewhere.
Right, right.
And I think it's back to the example, that was, right? And, and, you know, it's okay, and intriguing, um, like Malin Ten to her council colleague. Where she got, figured out how things work. You know, a lot of what I have experienced as a public administrator, public official, is that same thing from citizens, from council members, right? Like, we're part of the deep state, we're part, you know, and, and once they sit down with us and we show them, here's the bill, like, here's the law, there's the law of work. This is personal. This is a plain reading of code or state law or whatever. And our job is, you know, we're not going after somebody that is, it's personal. And they, but they take it personally, because it affects them, their livelihood, their life, et cetera. But, well, this is why I still, this is why I think it's just important to continue at the university. And I'd like to be students at home. Because I think that we need to pull them up.
Yeah.
Our job is actually set up everybody for success ahead of us, not give them one problem and make it work. Well, it does help the school, but I'm saying even, even the, the next mayor that's gonna sit in that seat, he, he needs to be, or she needs to be set up for success, not failure, right? That's, that's our job. That's our job as society. We're supposed to set up, leave the world a better place than what we thought, right? And, and you take that down into even the council, we're supposed to do that as well. And I think with the communication that we're doing with the university is a great way, but I really like adding these students. I think the students would be a great thing. And I did hear some of it, I think, in the, in the, in the, in the long meetings on it. Uh, that I'd like to bring in, um, show you guys and maybe get back on next. But I think, you know, so here's, change the narrative on growth. There's a lot of anxiety and concern about growth. But growth isn't just about development and conservation, for instance, of our, uh, engagement and, you know, so a bigger picture around what growth means. You know, it's, it's a yes, more people are gonna live here. Yes, that means more traffic, more, is that the other thing? But it also means neighbors, new friends, you know, opportunities to make the community better. We can actually change our zoning code over time. You know, we get these new amenities and things, new aesthetic that we desire one more time. So it's about what we're becoming, not just a subdivision being built, right? But what are we, we becoming, right, as a community? So a, a bigger, rounder picture of growth. And that's something that both we need to, right? And rally, and rally in the city.
And he asked me, I was struck with focus in my, um, so there is how do we better protect, um, the wetland and the, um, wildland that we want to keep here. And not do things, and I think we get caught up in, yes, if I properly develop them and then do what they reach to within the ordinances and stuff, it really becomes a step off. How does that thing impact, you know, with the water?
Yeah.
How does it impact the wildfire? You know, we went down the list.
And that's that growth, right? Where we go, here's what our code says, but we're learning from our experience. So, you know, we're going to put, so like, I'll give you a diamond as an example, right? So the code says you can, you know, build this, do that, whatever. But what they learn is if they don't regulate hours and days of operation, destruction, then they get a lot of noise and, and a lot of quality lives. So, changing our code, right? The environmental impact. We're concerned about how do we produce waterfall, impact on the environment? So we're gonna develop and adopt low-impact growth system, right, that, that is rest of concern. So this is a feedback loop where, you know, your code wasn't handed down to you from Mount Sinai on stone tablets and, and never be changed, right? It's a process where we as humans take what the state tells us to do and what federal law says, and just the code. We see how that works and if we don't like how it works, then we try some methods. You know, we just, speaking of like environmental impact and stuff, this is just something simple, but even by a budget,
Rather than destroying someone's house.
And we got, we got back and she fell on those. So I think those are the things that should open up our way of thinking. All around this. It adds to the loss and it's something that we should back really because it's also what.
Oh, totally agree. That's, that's going back to that point that we don't know until it happens, right? And then we have to learn from it and actually implement something that makes sense to mitigate some of these.
We were deluded.
Yeah.
Well, I was wanting to tell this story with about the great wishes of our area. So it's here and all the animals love like the company. And you always do watch it a lot of this. But you don't think that until you're, you know, back in there.
But here's, here's the thing.
Yeah.
So Clydeville, um, you know, the town about, about the size of the diners, about the same population. Again, like average, that's hair down, home in the diners, what happened? Uh, Clydeville is very similar demographic, a lot of tech executives and stuff. Higher school, just very wealthy people, but if every town has got a couple of properties that are kind of careless properties. The diners get a couple, um, and these become focus. And there's one in Clydeville that really means things. Because they have rats. Oh, we're not often like, you know, a little rat, we walk downtown, we're, yeah, we see a rat, a street rat, a street, a dragon, a rat. Las Vegas rats, here it is. And a lot of them. And so, you know, people would go by this house and they see all the, you know, hoarding, simulation, trash, and things of property cleaned in the city. And they start to notice rats and the neighboring property started to get a little bit of rats. Right? Well, so the city finally acted, got ahold of the property owner who doesn't live there. They're held, didn't live there and they, you know, sort of wanted to unaware of property. And started to do a baiting. And yes, we're all rats. Everyone's, right? Huge issue. Probably this has been some very recent changes, like yesterday, uh, the mayor stepped down. Wednesday, it's a step down. So they're calling for this. There. And this rat thing, they sort of caused this irritation there. Talking about. So. So, yeah, there's lots of those kinds of things that pop up when you're doing policy where, all right, we're going to put pressure on this point. And then you have unintended issues out themselves where the things have to do is try to anticipate them, but learn from them certainly.
Sean, do you want to say something about wastewater?
Oh, no, I can use my question. Um, I was just, you were bringing up, you know, scare of the state of what the equipment is and the cost.
Sergeant?
Yeah. But with the new, um, idea, I think was going to be a priority and the next step, um, mitigate all these problems. Uh, the winner will be attached to it, honestly. The winner will be attached, it's going to be in the water again. That doesn't, the pickleball court, so I want to address real quick to get into. So the pickleball court is a bit on, or on the, uh, budgeted last year, Tracy's very capable of receiving product, like for the houses. Uh, and I even did my own, did a little good site, I would have looked up the sale. Uh, that's the most, you know, normal conversation, one hundred and sixty to sixty-five testicles. They are saying that pickleball is seven game. Basketball is fifty-five to sixty-five. So basketball court right there. The other kids, right, they're screaming about their little ball. I am, you know, I, I, I feel for the homeowners there. Uh, because someone said, well, we bought the park twenty-five years ago. Just, just Asian, it's huge part and it's our job to actually improve the park, uh, certain ways. So what I asked Tracy to actually do, and we haven't made this announcement, but we're gonna, we're gonna play our part by some pushes to do grow up alongside the best line there, help them regain some of that sound. Little bit of dead between the house, that's really what it's there, maybe the supplement that are there to help. The thing you might be able to do, by the way, with this, but I'm hearing a lot about pickleball. Now, the country club has tennis courts that they kind of use mostly pickleball and the neighborhood right around there. Doesn't sound like. And, uh, so because the country club operates pickleball courts, they have, you know, stair members, a lot of control over, have a little more challenging to stay apart. But there's a type of pickleball, changing use for gameplay. More extensive, but it's, doesn't. So, right, and so, uh, up in a different point of the diners, the whole war to get some complaints, but there's more fight distance where the courts are probably behind affecting. Yeah, I think you can do things with the construction, the courts developed to.
Well, you put slats in the, I'm assuming most courts have chain made around. Do you believe that slats? That gets into the limits?
I haven't never looked into that, but that might be something to look at. Uh, so in the diner thing, and we may be the first jurisdiction in the state to do that. But I have a council member and several who agree with them that we should ban gas powered vehicles.
Oh, of course.
Because, you know, and there you can envision there are these distinct types of properties. And so the homeowners don't maintain them. They have landscaping companies come in and so, yeah, the big trucks come in and like six guys jump out and they mow and they leak load. So you'll have, if, if you're this house and you've got houses on all sides of you and you have quires of gas powered leak blowers serenading you while you're trying to hear your zoom calls and, you know, have to keep them under slows and can't carry on a conversation with your backyard patio. You know, so all these noise issues.
Why can't we be the one homeowner now that developed? We've got it here.
Yeah.
You're taking all the dogs too.
Yeah, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking to you. I do want to clarify something that Emma is correct. The plan is in working order. Right, it is working order. Uh, it's not blind, right? It, it's, it's fully self-sufficient. There are just problems that are on the horizon and it also doesn't like anything else happening. It's just, you know, we want to, we want to, we want to mitigate those as much as possible. And again, I don't want to be, we don't want to be the city that didn't plan for things. It's like the thing I make it here in, here every year, like, obviously, so I just wanted to know that. Oh, one hundred percent, and I know, right, I know, but like, I assume and I've heard, you know, probably wastewater is taken over and, you know, they would want it to happen, you know why, right? Uh, because we just.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, no, no, I know that.
So they would love to have. At, at this point, at this point, it doesn't make sense, right? But it's better for us now, but like, I, like, like, okay, let's, here.
But, you know, so it's like, that's, that's a different story, but like, like, it's just, I had to come here that like, weird.
Yes, yes, well, the drill press or the, uh, the press is twenty, twenty-five years old, they don't make parts for it anymore. So every time it breaks, we have to go in and figure out how we're fixing it.
Yeah.
Granted, we have other means of, of taking waste out and we do, we will have a truck and dump it out and go, right? So we're not, it's not impending doom, that it's just gonna, the dam's gonna burst and it's gonna just roll into the river down there.
It's expensive to have, I saw the checks when I signed in here a couple of weeks ago, it's expensive to have shoulder bolts, uh, manufactured and, and the different shafts for the machines that wear out, replaced. And it can be done, but having them done one at a time is costly.
And we looked at multiple technologies. We looked at technology that is just new on the horizon and just passed by the EPA. Of, of a giant system that uses three, that followed it and just turns, right? We go in there with a tractor and they turn it, oh, can't wait to implement it right now. It's the one that I did the two round, most basic system ever. It doesn't work here because we don't have a sign, right? So when I tell you this impending doom, I'm not saying that the dam's gonna burst and the stuff's just rolling down there. What I'm saying is that we have to optimize future because of it.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to plan for this because, yeah, we don't, we didn't think, we're someone's.
Yeah.
That's right, but it's also about a month. But again, we have, we have three million cent in analysis for, for the wastewater that we can use. We need four point two to complete all the upgrades.
So is, and that's where is how tribes can come in, they're just, and you add like, really, something to them or they just like, oh, we're really good.
No, we, we have conversations. It isn't, it's a longer process, right? So when I tell you that, you know, this all has to be done, it doesn't have to be done at all.
It doesn't have to be, they did it thanks before we turn on this way, or there was to come down the hill, right?
Uh, we would like it to have well, but matter because they, they have an up going right now. Um, we do need to do a couple of things like membrane, which are, uh, street quarters, a million dollars, you know, nothing other than a membrane. Right, the tanks aren't built, it's sitting, it's dry. Nothing in, we need the membrane and then they need to build in, it takes them six months to get here. Because they come from Asia and they have to be manufactured and then they have to be brought over and then made to the tank size. For the system, so it's something that we don't want to just lollygag on it, wait two, three years down the front, go, hey, we need to do this, right?
Yeah.
Something that will get, like, yeah. So the, the plan is offering, it's not, not because I'm.
Is it, is it already processing, processing the A one eight nine?
We do, we do, it's not coming down the line. It doesn't trust.
Right, okay, when there's a line, you get turned off, not till?
Uh, not till we have everything in place, right? So that's what I said, it's a, it's a longer process. Now you have to get, then again, we have to see what the clothes are now, what their, what their, uh, expectation of clothes are and how we handle what their expectation is. Plus our own, our own.
Right.
You feel they're solid, but not the.
Right, okay, that's right, that's right.
If you haven't taken it or no, you should go down and check it out. It's actually brilliant, but thanks, those brilliant.
Those words, coffee grounds or that, oh, no, coffee grounds are just as bad.
No, no, this person. It's not like roses, it's smell, it smells like money. Yeah, it smells like money. Yeah, uh, so wastewater for your plans, you have to, you know, keep up on your capital improvement plan for those. Every, you know, inflation affects that a lot. And update your rates so that your component of wastewater rate that goes to capital adds up to one. So that's, that's that step every two or three years, hearing study, proof studies, to stay on top of the cause. They, they can charge, um, is not, right? It's elaborate to be for everyone. Burn up is the same lunch, or same number as I.
Right.
You know, and she's one person I.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, there are. Probably very timely, you're gonna add a big customer to the system.
Yep.
Then it's, plus it doesn't have to be, uh, the company. Yeah. All this goes to the company as well. This is another shot that you have to do. Please, it's a new project. Yeah. Lot of parts of the EPA.
Well, so I'm on slide three. Have you four? So let's, um, we have lunch coming at noon. Okay. So what I want to do.
It's like ten minute breakable down the line.
I wanna, I wanna go through the notes from prior retreat, just kind of refresh and make sure as we go through this agenda, that we're, that we're hitting all this, right? And we've had a good, robust conversation. So notes from prior agenda, you remember I asked, what was the most impactful stuff since twenty twenty-four? What were your goals for the retreat we had six months ago? What do you want to do over the next year? And kind of review and discussion, uh, some updates. So I'll just kind of roll through these notes and see if they conjure things up. So if you want to take notes about some additional things to discuss, please do that. I'll roll through this pretty quick. So most impactful since twenty twenty-four, the tribe relationship, junction, uh, acquiring property, growth, I five, ten men, downtown, thirty year plan, uh, contract with CCSO, addiction that staffing, uh, public works, it wrote inventory, uh, succeed, equipment changes or improvements. Uh, key staff add, value added, as a fourth multiplier thing, and one of those that was cited. Uh, some grants, improved community relationship and participation. Uh, so goals for that retreat, understanding the mayor's goals. Um, with growth, are we getting jobs? Are we getting something big, uh, like something makes a destination, spitting up the downtown. Uh, the big picture, plan for the future, short term, you know, coffee shop, parks, was the roles in council in that. Public input and response to Facebook, we're hearing, you know, about Facebook today too. Um, direction from the council. This was from the mayor, what's your vision? Discussion, discussion opinion, projects and developments. The city's school relationship, what the mayor talked about today. Um, parks, calling part, having doing workshop with the schools, developing student volunteering requirements as part of school curriculum. Uh, what do you want to accomplish over the next year? Uh, we were almost three sessions deep into Los Center University. And we were all, you know, pretty impressed with the kind of turnout we got, which is what we expected. Uh, so what's next? Um, they got every twelve, eighteen months. We want to survey the participants and get some feedback from them about their experiences. Um, have a staff booth at community events to encourage participation, so maybe we gear up for the next uh, run of Los Center University, trying to, you know, get some turnout for that. Uh, encouraging community engagement beyond the city, contact legislators. Uh, city council positions up pending state federal legislation for getting to other cities. And we talked about that policymaking ecosystem. The city has a lot, the city has a relationship with AWC, the city has a relationship with county. Uh, there are other cities, there's legislature, national level cities, so the need to have this network, contact all these different groups. Uh, we talked about roads, strengthening constituent trusts, especially around heat issues like development, sounds like very deep. Uh, social media engagement, Anna was hired. Um, the website, had some discussion about the website and having some links out, dashboards, looking at ease of use, access to information, finding examples of what works, what you like, drawing pictures of concepts. And the mayor noted that a new website had been developed. So if you recall that, this is, I think, was the case, he said, I will talk about the website. And so there was, all right, well, find examples of what you like that's out there, of what you want, you know? Can't find an example, try to draw a page. Functionally, like you push this button, it dates here or whatever, right? And then you have a screen, or you pull the website up, or you scroll, or just shoot shots of yourself. And put up the front page. So while they're working on that, uh, someone mentioned using Q fencing to encourage engagement, website, events, issues, public meetings, really like kind of target for citizen. Uh, junction sign, property, right away transaction up there. Uh, council assignments and reports. Discussion about having maybe a quarterly meet and bring coffee with the council. Um, with the mayor's town hall twice a year on opposite quarters. Switching up the timing of the event and holding it at a beauty center. So websites, that's not next one.
This is kind of where we're at right now, sign. Each one of these are links down here, just so you guys can see it. And it all talks about what it is down here, there's, uh, slides that are running through. And everything, there's still some stuff that is not done, you can see right there yet. Uh, right now, it's been sent to the, uh, city employees so they can start critiquing old things if they like. Uh, and want to see and then adding stuff in there to each one of them. We get eight pictures of this thing. I see Sean Will's picture, she's her name.
Yeah, I get some too, yeah.
Uh, Hannah's, it's on her to-do list, um, and then, you know, each of these start. City Hall. And it tells you which, uh. Maria, Maria's still on my computer, to be close with her. It showed you which teammates are actually in, in each of the departments, give you contact information. I mean, that hair. Yeah. You'll, you'll be able to navigate through pretty quickly. This one will be.
You gotta left it on that, you gotta bring it back.
Yeah. So then you've got different areas inside of each of the departments to go through. Recent land use projects. This, this has been a monster of a site to build.
I bet, yeah.
And make it, make it, uh, user friendly and correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? See all this stuff going on down there and then your community resources. We'll have the events coming around.
Oh, and it's so.
Nonprofits. I'll be going to see that. Like nonprofits.
The school, it's like, it's just, the whole of Texas.
Hey, I want to be on there too.
You want to be on here?
Yeah.
Then send us over your logo and a little something, we'll throw it out there. I, I have no issue with that at all. I, I'd rather have everybody be involved in this as our community page. Uh, community resources, so it's gonna tell you all about the different parks and the nonprofits and like, see even the Los Center University is in there. Contendia Drive, local business directory is in there, then our utilities. We, we've modernized it.
Yeah. Like the background, not the top.
Oh, yeah, well, all of this is, there's still work in progress.
Of course, yeah, this isn't mine, right?
No, no. Really cool, lovely, really good. Yeah. It's taken us probably four months of what you're saying.
To get that part, yeah.
Well, we also.
Well, I was gonna say, you're doing it for free, so you probably do it when the guys have like, or girls, ladies have.
I think.
Okay, we're on the right now, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, no, it's great.
All right, a few more things to review, uh, the business district aesthetic came up. Uh, sponsoring benches and if I could just add aside, I'm worried about sponsoring benches. So, uh, I had an interesting experience, uh, called stuff like, having little memorials and things like that, really cool. Medina Park, so Medina has like two main parks. Medina Park, which is about five acres, it's got like a pond and then, and then there's Medina Beach Park, which is where St. Paul is. And right on the shore of Lake Washington, beautiful, uh, dirt acres across the lake to Mount Rainier. Uh, stunning location, both Medina Park. Uh, the city lacks a coherent memorial to post. And so in this park, this is grown where you have all these benches and they have plaques on them, you know, dead relative, dead vet. Uh, there's going to plant a tree and there's a plaque to, you know, dead relative, dead vet kind of thing. And so, and they're like, they have all of these, uh, requests for, oh, yeah. Play, and over the one tree, park, and the plaque. And so the council park board has often said, whoa, this place has started to look like a cemetery. Right? So just be real like deliberate about how you.
The coach, yeah, the coach. Yeah, we were a policy, policy, whether it's codified or it's just an immediate policy that reflects what the value is about the parks. Or finding a mission at city council around how to deal with this issue, because if you don't, then it just sort of proliferates. You plan a tree. Well, we're gonna learn from your, from your guys' issues, yeah, we definitely something, yeah. You plant one tree, that memorial, they cost us, fifty bucks or whatever, or maybe we can be charged more, maybe we can charge a billion, a hundred dollars. But if it costs twenty thousand dollars to build a more, just to maintain the thing.
And that's exactly the point that one of my council members made was, okay, you know, every time we plant a tree, you know, we take out a circle of grass. And now our public work staff have to navigate around these long rivers and moor, right? Uh, if somebody defaces the flash, then while paid for upfront, the city has to, you know, so there are these budgetary impacts that are sort of unseen. Why not consider that instead of front?
Yeah, good point.
Uh, Kate, go ahead. Uh, well, I was just trying to take some notes and see what it is that we actually accomplished from this last.
Six months.
I think we did, I think we did pretty well, uh. The last bullet point, the meet and greets, coffee with council, that kind of thing. Summertime, not, not considering things. Now that we're moving in to fall and, and winter, I think it might not be a bad idea to do that, just maybe two hour home Saturday morning or something.
Yeah.
Not everybody needs to be here, not any, but advertise it and make sure that it meets the O P A and all of that, so that we can.
Um, I believe the way that I know cannabis does theirs, they do them pretty often, I believe there are a couple numbers or splitting of ward that I don't have the right term. Um, so that they're not breaking quora or creating quora, they'll pick two people. And so they'll take turns, so if one of you guys wanted to partner together and do one, and if you pick a date, coordinate together, all, do all things to me and everything for you guys.
So the, the thing about, um, cannabis is their form of government, they elect council members by ward. So I think they have three wards and two are elected from each ward and one council member is elected at large. And so by code, I think you're supposed to have at least annually a ward meeting. And so the two council members from that ward and usually the at-large council member. And then the mayor goes to, uh, they will select a location within the ward boundaries and conduct a kind of an open house, sort of town hall style thing. And so, you know, they don't have issues in the forum that way. But those folks are elected correctly represented. So that's, that's their model.
No, I, I, I think, uh, before he goes with that, I think that, I think, I have to agree. Just so you guys know that we have some transition. But we've had to, uh, get ourselves back into the rhythm and routines. So, yeah, the mayor's meeting will start again as well, those are gonna happen.
Yeah, I think this, I think this is a good time. Yeah, and the only other thing I was gonna add was, I don't know if we're doing it, but it's not a, it's not a huge expense to have, you know, the, the city of the centers. the the city of the centers Facebook page pop up on. And it pops up on on when I scroll through Facebook or whatever, um or not by all. Not that often, but I, you know, if you, if it does, it is, that's something that you that you look at or you follow, obviously, but um. You know, we've done it for recruiting and hiring things too, where we did it for Lily as well. Thirty-five bucks or something, and you have a certain period of time where it gets boosted and it shows up on the. Things as they scroll.
Maybe boost it during the council meeting times, you know, like a couple days before the council meeting.
Yeah, or especially when this, the new website goes live. I think that's where we could really benefit by by having that.
We just do right now, we boosted a few of the concerts, Christmas festival time comes around, big, big events.
Definitely.
But I'm glad we already have a business start.
Operation. I had, and it's kind of off topic, but I have some thought. I did add some point I'd like to talk about, uh seven person council. What would that look like and how we did that one, that we were like around seven. I didn't. So I said, uh I just want to talk about a seven person council, that looks like, that we were. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh I think we're three hundred and forty-four, but I just tried to run through.
Three and five.
At five thousand. Yeah, so they did the next question. Uh I personally don't know about. Basically, you can kind of. Not seen the, like, those bad things or whatever, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Broad. But. This is a good. Yeah. I can maybe, you know, something about statues and figure out what are required to do and, you know, process to get there, it looks like. Yeah, I'll be honest with you, one hundred percent. We haven't discussed any of that bits. You guys have some other things going on, I didn't think about it. But I'm thinking, I'd rather we, if I could help you, recently. Well, we need to make our air. But I don't want, I don't want to stick it out there.
Our sales.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think workshop is easy for that.
Yeah.
Okay. So here's, here's this, uh we talked about the, you know, pet seminaries. Inadvertent pet seminaries kind of thing. Um so police services improved, police, schools, code enforcement, uh there was discussion about, you know, increased code enforcement activity at a part-time level. Should we start doing planning to do that full time? Full time not justified right now. Uh guardrail and speed limit signs were installed. Uh then we talked about long-term economic growth. Are we business friendly? Are we attracting amenities? Where do these amenities go? What amenities do cities afford? Things like feature one grocery store, medical office, hardware store, fitness facility, restroom. So I'll give you an update on that last one. That uh are we business friendly? You know, I I used to think that we were. But I've learned a few things here and some things that I have to. Staff to look into and possibly change. Do you know that by certain uses? They have a bar, they'll just use a bar to give a table. Somebody wants to open a bar here, they have to sign a lease, pay for it, submit a plan. And that plan in order for it to be implemented, this is just to get the alcohol to be implemented, be approved in six months. And then you go for your alcohol. That's how the city center works. To me, I think it's too long.
Yeah.
I mean, and you're, it's costly for them, is what happens if that's denied. But the the uh, yeah, this waste of money, yeah, right? That another business could came in and got it shorter. It's certain types of business, but ask the city staff to to look into it. Um and then bring it forward so we can see how we can mitigate that or take some of that down. I don't think it's fair to a person that has to wait six months to just find out the business and accept it. Let alone that applied for a a legal license. But I'm not saying it's hours and, you know, that's just a good practice. I I think that's a little much, and it doesn't, we're not business friendly. Now, the city Vancouver goes to six months. But they can afford it, right? They have all the commercial industry to meet.
Yeah.
I spend all my. So I I just, I want to bring that to you guys' attention. There are some areas that we can improve, become more business friendly.
So even. Well, it's okay, it's not a bar.
Well, if, well, I just want to still be, they got a restaurant.
Any type of.
And they wanna go to a service. Yeah, it's really.
But it's any type of business takes six months, right?
I I don't know. I'm thinking all.
I'm not, is all businesses taking six months?
No, it's different, that's data types of business.
I see, if they're gonna.
By one level, two levels.
Gotcha.
And so what I'm asking them to do is go back and look at the different levels and see how we can, I just want to find you though. Because if you talk about a lot of money, if you're paying twenty-five hundred dollars a month, you have to do it for six months, and then you find out that you can't do it, you're on your lease.
Now you're stuck again.
Yeah, you're trapped. I just, I don't feel that's business friendly.
I agree.
Oh, listen, when I first got on the house, when I was talking to people on all those businesses that are above the. Certainly was that they were there. Meaning, and it took six months to get the occupancy permit, like you're already occupied.
That's part of that, that process of talk. Yeah, some of that, so I've got some. And uh some of that was the individual, I mean, building space was outlawed and on getting up.
How long do you have?
Like, you know, doing unpermitted work, uh you know, not getting inspections ordered and. And there's a, there's a whole process, like when you build something, you know, you need to get permitted, right? So then you have a series of inspections, and that's why we collect the fees upfront. And over time, you have a reserve in your development services account or whatever. For, you know, building inspection account, is because you collect the fees upfront and then over time, you're gonna send inspector out over and over again, inspect the money, inspect the electrical, inspect the age that. Uh you know, the fire district, the fire marshal has to come and inspect the fire suppression system. And oftentimes, those things are not done correctly. And so the inspector notes that, they come back to check the corrections. And some of the developers are more dialed in on the client side than others. And so, you know, some developers are like, well, I can do what I want and small town. And I'm a big guy in a small town, so I'm gonna run roughshod, and then they run into a stop work order. And have to correct that. And so they may have gone out and signed leases with dental tenants, promising things. And what what inevitably happens is somebody who's conducting business at what's the city's fault.
Yeah.
They don't take responsibility for words. Not following processes, right? All they have to do. So in that particular case, I had a number of phone calls with somebody screaming. You know, like, oh, I mean, blah, 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 and like, you, like, dude, we know each other. Go back years, you've done this other places. You know, you know the process of that as well. Oh, we just ran into the same one. Yeah. About that way. And you can go to other jurisdictions with the same person and they'll tell you the same kind of story, right? Then there are some folks out there who think rules can apply to them and sheer force of will and personality. But the fastest way to get a project online is to follow the process.
Now, when you think there are some developers that are more dialed in than other builders, so the ones that are more dialed in instead of being a six-month process, it could be maybe a three-month process, is that possible?
That could use the ability in there. There's a lot of other factors. There there are some. There are some commercial developers that have turned something on. Yeah.
And that's it.
Possibly, it depends on what stage they're at with the space. So if you're building a spec space, uh working space like what this is. Now, you're building shelves, you're building all the infrastructure, you don't have a specific use identified yet. So you've got a potential tenant online and the next step is like, okay, now I have a use and now I need to do an internal tenant permits to prepare the space for occupancy. You still have to go through all the permitting and inspection and stuff. And so an example of folks that do this well would be Josh and all of us. Kind of all of our family who are developing all that stuff in the rich field, kind of positive development, I say her.
Do you think you're doing that right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
In what way?
Uh just because the the approach, they take in, like, I don't work in the rich field, I haven't reviewed the, you know, permits and all that stuff there. But I have had conversations with them when I did some work. Like, what do you, I talked to a few different builders and all the developers, they're happy with how they're working with the city, they have a good, quiet exchange of, hey, here's a proposal, they comment that really quick. You know, and the city works to get comments back really quick, they work through the issues. And then the builder, developer builds what they say. Because that's another issue, sometimes you go in and it's like, well, your plan is this, would you go with it?
Yeah.
Why? Right?
Does Josh live here?
Oh, so you know, uh Jan, all the, uh there's the old high school pharmacy that have property. Uh high school pharmacy. Because you go out. So if you go out down here. First hill you go up. Off it. Before you go down and then up to where the junction is. They have a couple of property in there.
So is, do you see a builder, you're saying he doesn't.
Developer.
He's a developer.
So he, you know, hires out in the building market. The developer typically controls the application process, planning process, design or process. And then they go contract out with builders, they go build. But they take through the process. So there are some that are very special, like all of us, you have process, they're dialed in, control the timings. And they get a better outcome because of the way they pursue that.
Is there any way to get a list after the back?
Uh I mean, it varies by by your station, every, every different tour station has their developers to. Get to work with and know what they're doing, and then they've got some that are. Again, trying to caliphate. Oh, uh Dean Molnado, who does a lot of development in closely in rich field. Um but he's got his his stuff to be dialed in, he's getting, I think the group that always develops is Molnado.
Molnado.
Yeah, Dean Molnado. And again, another, another. What's going on there, Ryan? If you want to know how you build something, are you developing something?
I'm always, I'm always looking for something. I'm always looking for someone that wants to do that and I want to know.
Well.
We need to get one.
Well, that's, that's a good point, because I think we're coming up here, oh, maybe it's on the next. So bear with me here. So we have these amenities. Uh again, more review here downtown Timman, there were two real estate transactions going on at the time. Uh financial plan, we draft impact fees, market impact fees. And there will be an update on your financial status in terms of the outreach. Open houses will be promoted to utility mailers. Some discussion about like yard signs, yard postings to promote that process. Uh the center road, uh trying to get four lanes to the freeway from downtown. Uh with multi-use path, street light, et cetera. We talked crop land, we talked broken, and we have new water sources. Uh for that thing. And here we go. So more reviewed, so there was a discussion about making future development, having gateways be responsible for their own streets. Uh like in Henderson. Right. The center gaining jurisdiction over the wetlands. The garage roofing project, vacancy field in City Hall. Uh the coffee location and lease for that at the old bank building. Um gravel parking, turn lane, bridge, and then Project Myrna.
Oh, I know.
Myrna was working on a project at the time. Tracy Ryan project lists, April seventh, community center event. And then we walked through these renderings of downtown. And it was fun because I presented these renderings, you know, mayor sharing with me, working into the slide deck for the retreat. And which was on Saturday and then the following Monday was the center university session on community economic development. That night wasn't planned. Okay, and then the next thing is giving statements. So why don't we take a minute before we go through your notes and address what he's on it and he did. And he won't finish. And I.
You're on the floor. When you were there. Chili sounds really good right now.
Is that what you did? Okay, did I eat chili that way? And now you're all chili'd out. Yeah, I'm like, yeah.
And it was not worth it.
I'm, I was like craving chili. Apparently.
The day you ordered that.
Yeah, I made chili that week. Think we want some chili? Oh, yeah, yeah.
No one wants to watch you.
No.
This conference will now be recorded.
Heri's office, we were awarded two million dollars a year before, or crazy creek. And uh she rescinded that because she lost the money and she wasn't gonna go to the airport again. Uh that forced us to scramble. Having an extra two million dollars, which we ended up getting covered to the state. They have another two million, actually covered two million at her office. She did say um that they supported the downtown plaza, because we gave it across so well. And then uh and then they would continue to support it. We got a call from, who's in Campbell's office, they said, they they too supported it, they were gonna go ahead and rerun the twenty-five with that kids. Again, the city that they'd already picked. And they would work with Campbell's, because Campbell's office is gonna be the one that supports us getting up to three million dollars. Campbell's office called uh and said, we're gonna go after this and in July, I got the uh notice that we were not selected for the uh three million dollars. So that's where we stand right now. A little frustrating, I actually went through a little bit of scheme. No, the city here, the residents of the center pay taxes all these years and I'm asking for a question. But we're asking for a little bit of help. You know, the city here, the residents of the center pay taxes all these years and I'm asking for question, but we're asking for a little bit of help. What I'm asking you guys to do, which that's supposed to go over, is help design what our priorities are for the state federal legislative. Hannah?
Yeah.
And this is, this is one that's still on. Do you guys have other ideas or other ones that you'd like to skip there? Now would be the time to let us know. Well, the maintenance of the center road lighting, for providing safety improvements. We're going after grants on this one right now. We would still like to see this one on there because we thought we could have, uh, streetlights all the way out to the freeway. We know what the total cost is. We were told about a million dollars when Tony and those guys did, uh, uh, the estimates for him, one of the, last year.
So that's, uh, a million dollars from the, the center bridge to the freeway.
It's a lot of light.
Yeah. Well, you're not talking about a little bit of light.
Well, we're going after grants that actually, um, put the lighting, uh, to a shared use path as well. That's what we're also going after. At the minimum, we'd like to see the lighting done, so it's ready to make it a little bit safer for. Loca, we're going to do that, get Sean to.
Yeah.
I know, and get a take-home vehicle.
Yeah.
And then every day.
Yeah, I was just going to say in the recycling.
Just install one every day on their way home.
Yeah, exactly. Before, in a year, hopefully.
Now we're talking.
I know, I like that.
Yeah.
As soon as you work out there, I'm like. You guys have a scrapyard? You guys have a scrapyard?
So Tom, you've seen the, the lighting plus and the shared use path?
Yes. Well, because we see joggers and walkers walking up and down that.
Oh, yeah.
And one of these days, because the, the frequency of the people going up that is filled up, it seems to be increasing. At some point, the odds are someone's going to get hit. But we're going after a, a shared use path with the lighting on the grants. But at the very least, we want to make sure that the road lighting is done. So you can see those walls. I don't think that will be coming up there.
Even just the climbing animals.
I can't say that you're wrong. I have my foot.
Even wildlife, you know. It's really dark in there.
It is.
Bog sits in when you're trying to get up.
Pretty, pretty important way to act as far as if you're sitting together, right? Come to, on, period, I don't.
Yeah.
Right, we need this connection.
Yeah, the roads and lighting around, safety.
And I don't know what's on this one, but what ties us all into this is the four lane road from bridge out. So, yeah, right there. 25 million for the. And then you support regional state priorities, so the public safety, creating academy, not the school. AWC 2025 legislative priorities and our county transportation. We want to get another one for the regional, uh, the legislative suspension. I'm, I'm not sure if they're going to bring it back up this year or not. Let's stop it. Boston Bar is helping all property. And so they're going after a huge swap, they also want to write, um, passing their own state law. I think there's some connection between this and our college and sort of like career. Okay, on the federal side, so the first bunch of these have to do with downtown 2.0, so these are different requests. So 1.5 million for the community facilities program, which is a USDA account. Downtown 2.0. Highway infrastructure program, 3 million to construct road, water, community facility improvements for your access to parcels. Bud, that's just great things. They go down. Uh, stag, another one, 3 million, uh, for the community plaza and affordable housing aspects of the project. Uh, city highway, another, uh, Bud request to whole time overall improvements, 2 million. And this is for, let's see, this is for the path. This is for the shared use path, but down towards, uh, the, uh, ice mountain, split into Riverside. Riverside, yeah, going down to Riverside, it says, that one, we are 750,000 dollars short. So we'll be coming to you guys in council to approve that we end up actually spending that money.
Everything's.
We don't get the greens. Like we're gospel.
I'm sorry.
We're going, we're going down for grants on it again. We'll know here the next few months, but it'll probably will be on the budget for next year to actually come out of our month. We put up, uh, project signs out there and also we're putting flashing lights so that people realize that when driving out there, it's a very tight, thin spot and there are walkers. Just watch out for them.
I guess my son walks that.
I, I, I've already heard from, and I'm like, maybe the legislative I heard up at, uh, Olympia, no one's been killed there yet.
Oh, my gosh. Now let's not wait.
Yeah, that's our standard.
Yeah, that's terrible.
It's crazy.
No, my son took the wrong bus to his dad's house, had to walk to my house and, you know, we're, we're literally two minutes away. But the walking path is so unsafe and I was like, no, I was like, I'm so upset with you. I'm like, yeah, why'd you do that? I said, you need to call me. I was so upset.
Anybody wants to see what the, the path looks like?
It's just one little basic thing.
And I think this is the last one on your federal agenda, this 250,000 dollar app for farmers market. We're actually in the process of that right now. They, they weren't seeing any of us when I went back to DC. Um, they haven't opened it because of the transition of the administrations. And they just started taking some of this information, I think this, our August, however, it's November, so it's in August. Uh, we should hear back something on this. This is, um, to your help for the, uh, farmers market type stuff, food boards, the advertisers that are paying for it. You know? Some of the things that we discussed in our effective side. So now thoughts on your federal state agendas, ideas, or what kind of feedback you can give to councilors? I want to know if there's anything that's on here that you guys don't feel that we need to go now. First, and then I'd like to know if there's anything that you'd like added to this. So they're asking, they're asking for state plans on this panel? So on the federal side, you've got one, two, three asks for the downtown, the center, three different accounts. And then you've got the highway and the farmer's market. And on the state side, that one's done. So you've got community plaza, so downtown 2.0, center of lighting. Center of corridor.
What's going on with the, uh, what club and sound? Inside? Oh, okay, good. Well, I'm going to say, I haven't heard about pop guy. Okay, what was the fix up?
We have to get sound, it's over, it's over.
Up in the ceiling?
That's out of the mall.
Oh, my gosh.
And the music's required.
Oh, my gosh. What have we learned in that?
Forty-six hundred to the first batch.
I know, but what was the worrying process of building that building, women didn't, government didn't, we couldn't avoid that, anything?
We didn't know it was going to be the echo or was, the echo was going to be as strong as it did when we decided to get rid of the asbestos ceilings. Now remember the asbestos ceilings, I, I wanted them open, but it, it would save us money, right? And if we just sprayed them, it would make it unhealed, which it did, but then it created the echo. Those communities, yeah.
Yeah.
It even, it doesn't look like a prison anymore.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It would look like a prison cafeteria.
Yeah, yeah.
Not at all, not at all.
If I worked in New Zealand, it didn't look anywhere near like that. Or smell like it.
But when we originally went for that money.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
We, we get some.
Something with that, we do this now, we do. And now they've made some changes. Did you say that? Oh, yeah.
They want the bench or?
I gave you the bench.
Oh, good. Yeah, they got the bench. They got the faucet?
Should I say it or am I?
Yeah. They all know. We just have it on it.
Wheels on wheels.
I should have gone in and left it. Would have been right up my height.
They're going to do it everywhere except for two feet and wash. But, uh, it's a very personal issue, I want to make sure that. And Hannah has been instrumental in it and she makes the dad's song. So the wheels on wheels is going to maintain it, just, we're going to have to bring the food up properly to the center and then serve it to you. But it's not going to be easy, ask the kids.
So our line up is.
Well, that was, that was a short event, I think. The whole thing was a battle. Always. So then we think we've got it solved, pronounced, so the wheels on wheels will not be any, hurt at all. The other one we're working on right now is the teen center. Pretty nice.
Okay, what, what are your?
All in part, I know. You're going to update it soon if I got more information. But my, my feelings, as I've been here, and as a parent, um, you have to take care of your elderly, right? And make sure that they have sufficient needs and also socialization, right? We don't take care of our own. Throw up and all, we take them home. Yeah, you get other alters, the younger generation takes care of them.
Yeah.
I, I'm getting this together. So let's see what the food part.
Yeah.
Teens, we have nothing, teens.
Yeah.
Nothing for food except what costs dollars.
Yeah.
Right? And I stayed at night in our park, like park for the, our days, so I watched the stage. This way I made a panel on the stage, but on the stage, it was awful. So I stayed in the park. And I just, yeah, it was awful, not the park, great. Nobody's supposed to be in them, right? So I just paid attention to it, so it was disturbing.
Yeah.
Um, so we got to have something for our teens that serves a couple. So if we get enough people that can help supervise the kids, that can help nurture or groom those kids to maybe two other things that might have some problems. And the other side would also provide, provide server, problem. And if we're centralizing where this is flowing, then we're working with police and, you know, sources.
Yeah.
He's going to play, he's a smooth detective.
His what?
Detective police. I'm asleep.
No, no. See, that's a smooth player. Yeah, he's like, oh, I'm a goalie player. He's ready to pass.
Actually, it serves, it serves multiple, even when Sean swags your coat. It serves multiple purposes.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Um, so I'm doing it in a way that we're not getting them public funds, so to speak, as much as possible, right? Where it's not in the bank where it is. Frankly, I don't want to go to jail. Uh, and two, we don't need the.
Can they use the bill club for a part of that teen center for certain days when you block off.
The issue they're having is that they have to store a lot of stuff, wasn't said that they have, you know, basketball booths and stuff like that. So that's been the issue. Um, there's a lot of volunteers that are trying, in some ways, they're being very bushy.
Volunteer.
Trying, uh, trying to find a home for the teen center. Um, but there are people that are working to resolve this. There's a lot of people. So is there an ask there, like your state federal legislative? I don't know if there's anything we can ask for. They don't like to do anything that purchase of, uh, real estate. So it really, that's what needs to be done, should have permanent loans and sort of, you know, um, so this is the teen center we're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of the, the center, is it?
It's part of the Center United as well, you know, Soski's are really involved.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's, it's a passion for Chris and sometimes, sometimes it gets a little overbearing for some people with, uh, the ask.
Yeah.
But she's doing it for a good reason. Awesome. A lot needs to be known, some little. Call account, you know, where the federal, federal especially, we just won't waste funds in there. Even might come up with problem statement that, you know, without, you know. I am, I am going to do whatever at that point, because right now we're, we're running out of ideas.
Have you called Rock Solid yet and you've had a round and you've talked to them?
No.
Was that a whole different thing?
Put stuff out in the public on the.
Yeah. No, I just.
But we are, we approach certain people in the city for certain things.
Okay.
Um, we're just waiting here that.
Great, yeah. I'm just thinking of something in our, another meeting that's two years really long, Rock Solid is.
It's all.
They're great for.
That's good to know.
Yeah, they are amazing.
You guys, I said. These, they are quite.
That's why we thought they, I was going to say they probably are.
Well, if you're going to judge Soski, Soski's themselves, I mean, you know, I think they're, uh, their word is gold. The Center United. She comes from Samson, I think, so it's used in a little bit of service.
Sure.
What's that, uh, Melissa, you asked? Yeah, I think they give some funding from Samson through the prevent coalition.
Oh, that makes sense.
So, yeah, there's a lot of, well, Melissa's, she part of, is in the, that's made of this money.
Oh, it is? Not me, Melissa.
The funding's gone.
Oh, really? Oh, no.
Melissa, you have to still run, but it's like her, her pay and her job, do you volunteer that?
Oh, no. Because the state, because of the changes of the state.
Probably changes the federal.
Because Trump's like, I'm not paying for this.
There's more of J's.
Oh, oh.
They're just having lots of funding.
I think you try and get rid of it more.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So those are, that's how I. Don't perform surgery with tools that I. You don't do surgery with tools from your garage, you use a scalpel. If it's a couple of. Some more than that.
Yeah.
Right on the field. Those were. Survival rates were a lot lower then.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so we've got this on here, some to explore as a potential legislative priority. What else needs to be added? And any thoughts on what your. Are we allowed to, as far as with the ask, are we allowed to actually name a nonprofit there or can we just, or should we just leave it as teen center? For those city of the center? Um, I think you can just, you know, I would start with this as a project, right? Problem statement, concept, and then run it by your lobbyists and see what funding is out there, what kind of eligibility requirements are there? Can you, you know, focus on a nonprofit? Cause this could be like, if it's the Center United and it's more lean on the federal policymakers to get these funded programs that's going and like, how do we get some dollars? Uh, you know, I, I don't know all the stuff there. Murdoch's the other one you should check. Burdock's the other one you should check. Yeah, Burdock, definitely. So Burdock is a, uh, it's a kind of thing.
Well, I think that's some of the issues that they're, they're happy, you know, is there's.
Your.
They're both great idea, but. The Center United has some difficulty changing funding because of some of the things they, they stand for. And I'm not saying one way or the other, sharp whether it's big or not, but they are very limited in their, uh, sources of donations. And. I think that. They need to heavy on small amount of. So kind of expanding.
Well, that's.
Oh, you're, you're right. So here for intentions for these kinds of, you know, youth services, uh, types of things. Got a little bit of. Yeah. I've got a little bit of experience in this space, kind of raised all over life. E O C L. And community foundation is definitely one to ask. We're off here in the press. Uh, the nearest.
The which?
The hall was with that. That would be another one, yeah, to see if maybe, uh, the which. And first, yeah, first.
When. When, um. Melissa and Chris came to Alliance meeting and talk about covering the. Ideas and additional. There, and I appreciate what they're doing with their focus are small and I get they want to just help center. But there isn't any place here that even there wasn't limited funds, there's no place in town. That can do what they want to do.
There isn't. There's no, but we, it's, same as I don't wanna get in the element of the work, the building, cause I don't know. But that was.
Well, regardless, it's, it's. I think that the whole they need to, they need to expand, right? There's, it's, it's a lot easier to buy a van and drive some kids to someplace in Chicago. Somewhere else than it is to try and.
Buy the house or property.
Giant. Warehouse to.
I think that Burdock would be a hard one to, for listening. Yeah, I mean, depending on what their board is focused on. Regardless of what they stand for, or what their problems are and what the issues. After tackling. Let's start with your narrative, problem statement, narrative and concepts. And then your lobbyist does, you say, you work out there, that might check the box. And then you can, you can start with the. Um, what, what other things should go on your state federal priorities? Add things? Emphasize things, what's, what's highest priority on the list?
Some of the other ones are the wants, but they're not critical needs yet. Um, even though why they're, uh, I think we have to have a structure. And then that means the communities support behind this.
Okay, so it sounds like we have concurrence on that between listening case thoughts from our, and what's Sean? Yeah.
I was thinking of.
Yeah, they said.
Uh, you know, community service, second final, please, please get. Turn.
Well, yeah, there are some local, I mean, are there? Sometimes you don't even know, there's people writing your own community that have money.
Um, that was the question.
Oh.
Right, so I think.
Oh, sorry, I didn't retain, what did I want to put over? Yeah, sorry, yeah.
I have this set of asks. And there's downtown two point O and a lot of asks around that. And there are the transportation requests and amongst the transportation requests, it's Pacific Highway and the center road, two different transportation. And so what's on the table is, uh. Prioritizing the transportation asks. Cause oftentimes when this comes down to whether it's state or federal budget, is your lobbyist calls and says. They give you one of these things you have, which one do you want? And so you want them all and you ask. But if you had to narrow it down and say, all right. Got one ask that we can get through. Well, I think with the half on the Pacific Highway, we kind of have that covered. It, it's like more marketing priorities right now. Seven hundred thousand short. Yeah, well, we're in the middle of, uh, we just signed up for, signed for. So, I mean, yeah, I think we can continue pursuing that, but like it's. And if we're prepared to go forward either way, I don't think. So, so we're gonna say number one priority is Pacific Highway.
I would just say the all of the pedestrian safety.
We have, we have to actually list them separately and we have to give them a little. Each one of those. I mean, that's. Same tackle list that you see in, you guys wrote on the last couple of years. This is the same thing.
So that the Pacific Highway should be part of the list, right? Part of each.
Well, and here, here's so far my experience with lobbyists. The higher, the state doesn't give out the most money. That will give out up to three billion dollars, uh, on a earmark, each one, right? They'll give out, each one will give us three billion. Um, the state is actually very limited in what they can give out and I've only seen, I think the most I've seen so far, uh, on little tiny projects like that with about five, six thousand dollars. So Pacific Highway for short, seven fifty, the lighting's a million dollars. And I don't even know what the cost of the shared use path that will go all the way out to this on the. So, I mean, if you guys are gonna prioritize some of this. Uh, it would probably be your, your shared use to try to mitigate that seven hundred and fifty thousand and the lobbyist knows that we're going up their branch on that. And if, depending on how that grant goes, then she knows to move that down if we give the money and if not, keep it up, right? And then I, to me, lighting seems to be more of a, uh, critical point, getting lighting all the way out to the freeway at a million dollars.
Yeah, that's what they get more.
This is for the state.
Yeah, but the growth that we're, you know, hoping to build about I five and then to landing, getting that shared use path and that light in there now is huge. So those people that come up there, maybe they can drive down, cause it's whatever, like it just helps.
So you bring that down to that third one, right? And then the fourth one, we're doing the, uh, four lane road, you know, now. Right? Get all that. I did, that's, I, 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 the third one would be the, the shared use path outside of the center or outside of the junction. Or it would be your family, the whole thing, I mean, I'm very much on board with that, but I would assume that we're. Very standard, very, basically, that. Standard. In part, I have worked right now. So I set the, set a million dollars on the light to. Anyway, it's.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna tell you about the four lane road again, when I found out from our last summer, a year ago. He about spit, right? He was like, who that was? We, we wanna do this and he said, I don't know where the twenty five million has been on that, but it was fifty, gone a hundred million. And your project. It's not something that they're just gonna come out and go, yeah, you got it, we're going.
Just from the bridge up to the freeway.
Yeah, well, and these. This is also, these three projects are further along in design. Right? You have a better idea of what the design looks like for these. And what the cost is, and we almost got this one for the funders. So typically what you would do is you would say, all else equal, like, yes, we have a green application popping. And if we get that, then it'll move this one down. But right now, what we know, this point in time, making our temperature right now. This would be top priority that we set that, that board. And then we fit, then the, the, if you go back down to this downtown, it must be a more.
Yeah, the top, the first two and. And third is the closer are, are safety issues right now. The fourth one. Is going to be necessary eventually, but it's not necessary.
Yeah. It's. Right, but you have to get it on the radar.
Right.
So that they're talking about it, because it needs to stay on that radar as they change people in the representatives in center. Right? Cause you don't want that to die off, otherwise you're back to spread water and at fifty million dollars. Can't start a spread water. And you remember Breezy Creek started with, um, that twenty nineteen earmark of a million and a half dollars to design. Right? So that's kind of where you're at here is give us. Two, three million dollars so we can start designing. So we understand how much right away we have to buy, you know, what's, what's the cost that's gonna look like? And how long do we take and all that stuff? So you have to start with that process. So that's the first act. And then when you spend those dollars and develop that information, then come the additional acts. You didn't get Breezy Creek funded in one day, right? It was a series of acts, so from time, as we learn more about the project and the project here. And as those, as those asks were coming in, the representatives that are doing this day, all of those are also expired. So they know the emergency lights, they want to keep that momentum going. So, you know, having a little experience with this, I would say kind of the waterline for you is here. You want these three funded, take them. Right? Kind of know what the scope is, what the cost is. These two, you have to ask, so I, I would say don't even put a priority on these. Just saying, you know, if we get down here, they're on the list. They're, they're on the list, yeah. Yeah, because someone might say, oh, look, this one is a million bucks or two hundred and fifty thousand performance market or whatever it is. Actually, well, that's the big block in our, uh, with our representatives right now in downtown. Right? Because it's the one that they all got excited about.
Yeah.
The players, yeah, it's already going forward, so I don't know if you want to put that, I will say four lane.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Cause we haven't even told.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the, uh, cap going out to the junction. I know it's a safety concern, I'm not so sure that that is the right time to be going out of that, because that's gonna tie in with that four lane road as well. I think the lighting.
Do the lights right now.
Love, yeah, exactly. Cause you know what that. Yeah, but I was just gonna say the right, that's gonna be a big deal.
Can you just take some light and. And say, ha, ha, ha. Are you sure, here's your, for the people that are running and walking, turn the whole safe so. Right, so cars.
Cars and cars.
Yeah, I'm just saying, is there another little solution to do with the lights? That's like kind of a band-aid and we get to that part, you know, to the lights and do some, do some paint, do this and you.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah.
By the way, this does not go on your list.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, don't cross.
So these priorities don't go on your legislative agenda document, right? But you know, and your lobbyist knows, so that as you push all those asks forward, you can be very practical about how you get funded. Well, and, and with your conversation, when they start having these conversations, you're right in there. What's gonna be acceptable, what, what is gonna be the focus of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, during the session. So does this all make sense? In terms of this is our position, uh, priorities? And yes, this, these, you know, are a little bit interchangeable depending on what the opportunities are. Um, you know, if path is easier to fund than this and four lane, which probably the case. And it's an ongoing safety issue, then maybe you nail that in person if anyone was available, right?
Is the, is, I'm guessing that Pacific Highway thought that was with lighting and sort of guessing about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually.
Purchase pedestrians? Oh, wow. Cause no way you use the. From the road completely? Oh, that's a nice idea, yeah, cause I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, you wouldn't have thirty five percent off. Okay, so let's go. I think it also goes under the, uh, state crossing school. Oh, all of them, yeah.
Oh, that's very cool.
So.
Yeah, we're all people.
We're, we're getting into the last forty minutes or so. Time to start kind of wrapping up and forming some direction. And. So let's think about like future retreats, when you wanna do your next retreat. And any other information to add, but I wanna go back to. Where do we start? Question, right, that spurred a lot of this stuff. So based on what you're hearing today. What do you wanna do in the next six, twelve months? I like to see the university come back. Think that, uh, you can never educate the public enough for people, let's be.
The students?
Oh, for, high school, the, uh, high school students? Okay. Cool, sweetie, clever. It's all, in fact, all those kids. So let's revisit some of the notes here from the beginning of discussion, so growth, zoning, concerns, GMA education. Uh, noise issues. Again, with GMA. C trans stuff, state legislative impacts. C trans. Uh, community engagement. Downtown two point O, Timon. Or the trees. Yeah, you can identify, if you, if you schedule a bunch of these, like some cities every month, they have some kind of. Green or town hall or whatever it is. And sometimes they have specific topics. They say, we wanna hear from our business community on this aspect of what it's like in the city. We wanna hear from our youth, right, youth and families. Um. So you can have specific areas of focus, if that's if you wanna narrow the focus. And that might be a good thing to do, because if you don't narrow the focus, then what you care about is this over and over and over again, right? Or you care about the I C L. Go ahead. Go ahead.
We know.
Are you still interested in TV? I think, yeah, you sure? Yep. Okay. I think we would have to just, yeah, well, actually, like, so first Mondays, what we're doing first Monday on, um, works with my schedule. Because my calendar, we're on the second. It was discussed last, uh, March, I think that was the three, but staff, uh, they wanted to go for the next fall. You know, I would wait. You do, yeah, I think that we started again in January and we did it for, and then we, if we kiss like one of them. Hey, it'd be next to, like, some of the, some students. And we made, they made that sort of, or lots of, like, are those students?
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking CWP for world problems as opposed to A, senior.
So they still take it?
So, but they have the similar class, similar, they did not label the same.
High school thirty-some on, year, four years.
Yeah, they did. My son, I was just, it's, it's deep because, I mean, her class, and it's like, kind of like, yeah, it's current world problems. It's political things, so maybe, I don't know. Because if you tell a whole school, well, then, yeah, I don't know. There's maybe more kids that are already on that path that seem interested.
What about inviting people that's specifically on the business here? Really, we just.
Work. Yeah, I think the wordways would get worked out better.
Yeah.
So, so you know what the sign is on your, um, development right now. Where we're going to.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, give me, give me some feedback on that. It's great to see kind of, uh, the signs in there. You see it going, the left-hand side, but, uh, the, the, the left-hand side.
I haven't seen it, I haven't even seen it.
When, when, I haven't hoped for a while, but when you're, when you're taking the exit and you're in our lane.
Yeah, you're not paying attention.
But, but there's a big green sign.
What's the green sign?
One of the, one of the, the graphic signs is the tier.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, because you're so focused on this and going at the right time, you're not looking, oh, what a beautiful sign. Oh, what's, what's the next city council meeting?
You don't want to be killed on your left.
Yeah.
Well, I just, she had when he was inside, and I didn't like that. The sign is that represented, goes back to the town, the state of rock now, but for some reason, uh, Tom and Joe changed.
I don't know.
I wanted something more, you know, personally involved. Um, and everybody there is a sign of the way, and that can be mitigated, uh, as soon as we get our sign up. So I've asked for a different, uh, book, but as soon as the sign goes, then that's another way that we're going to reach people.
Yeah.
Right? We're going to reach all sorts of people up there, parents here.
Hopefully, yeah.
They're, they're gonna see it just as much as they see it down here, except it'll be right in their eyes. For this one here is not right in their eyes. Yeah, you have to look over, you have to slow down. This is a big sign.
Okay.
Not a tiny, tiny sign. This is a big sign that says eat at Joe's, flashy.
Oh, really? See, oh, right.
No, I'd say, that's.
Oh, why?
Figure of speech.
Oh, okay. That's why I thought at first, I was like, what? Okay.
Yeah, no. That's gonna be a big sign. You know, remember cartoons, eat at Joe's, they flash. If you, if you don't have one of those.
I did, I did, I did. I don't remember no signs that eat, dog, don't forget, dog, Joe's burger going in, in the junction. I'm like, what the heck? How is that? No.
I, I mean, you may be feeling really old right now.
I do.
Well, that's because you're right behind me.
You're only ten years apart.
Well, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, those cartoons, I agree.
Uh, I think, I think there's a number of, of, well, obviously, you've got a lot of coordinates that need to be updated and we continue to work on that. But then there's a couple of things that I think there's enough to be born in the community that wanted, that, that we need to look at those, like the ballpark.
Side by side. All of us, that'll be to you guys in the, in the, in the September or first week, October.
First, everything.
There you go. Okay.
All parts of the.
Yeah.
All right. Any other things that we want to add to this list for area development? Anything, anything else we want to add, you can add to the area. Yeah, there's workshops, a few workshops that have, they're working, uh, increasing council size.
She plays tech.
Can you read my writing? Yeah, I was just trying to, I was trying to, you know, your writing's fine. It's, my writing is terrible.
That, yes, right.
I don't know, I think that really sums up a lot of it. Very short, huh?
Where do we start with, uh, trying to get this, how, where do we start?
That's the, the staff, staff stat by the time. Um, and they are clearly different. We've seen how, sure, that's different levels. So we can have a little more of this.
Is there, uh, instead of a, a linear approach where you have to apply here, then you apply for the, you know, your liquor license through, uh, liquor control? Is there a way?
You can't even apply for it, so you've been approved by your.
Is there a jurisdiction?
Yeah.
But is it, is it us that has that rule or is it the, the role that has that rule? What I'm saying is if we can make a lot of that.
Street line.
Then it.
We're looking into all of that, actually, every single bit of that. So like I said, to me, it should be a sixty day, at most.
Yeah.
It should not take six months. It should be a sixty day. That gives time for people to write in and say, we don't want that bar here, we don't want that workshop here, we don't want whatever, right? And, and use those as examples.
Because they're big, yeah.
That's it. Take use of that time, then make the decision. Six months seems.
And is that why they drag it out to you?
A lot of us do.
Oh.
So here's, I'm gonna throw an idea out, right? State auditor's office has a performance management section. So they have staff that they will send out to your jurisdiction, uh, and it's, I believe it's free of charge jurisdiction. And they will do like a process improvement exercise with your staff. They're trained and lean and Kaiser. And so that may be something you want to do is reach out to SAO and engage them as like, hey, we have this process we want to look at. We need, you know, facilitator, you string to come and map it and help us identify all the stuff. And they'll give you some free work to do, some research to help document the process to be kept workshop. Most of the things.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I did not know that. That's really good, really. So we will look into it. When I was in battleground, they did, uh, a review of our single family permitting process. Because most of our development review was family residential and identified all these different areas that were like development. Engineering can be more responsive to applications because that was through public works versus the, you know, Aaron's Community Development Director. And so, you know, there was a little friction between those two departments. They had to tag team, process the applications, and SAO identified, well, structure this way, take these steps out, add these things in. Um, they do that for jurisdictions. So that might be a good one to help tackle that. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna add on, uh, legislative agendas here, taking the corporate that feedback here approach. And this item for lobbyists. And then you have just other things you kind of need to bear in mind, this community engagement, how to deal with misinformation. And a lot of that may just be checking in with each other as a team. Like, hey, we have this big conference real issue coming up, or we're expecting to get some blowback on it. How do we want to approach it? Map out our process or let's workshop it. Let's do a highly publicized workshop where staff are giving the information to us, we ask questions, we take a comment, have an open house on it, public, whatever it is.
Workshop.
As you say. Uh, well, I think for the public comment, we usually have, well, some, some jurisdictions do public comments. We've had a nice, no response before, we, we get the not moved ahead or, or make some changes to it. You could, you know, add a public comment item to the workshop, or you do a listening session. Where, you know, it could be the form of an open house, you know, just behave as topic we're putting on the agenda. We're sitting aside this hour, there'll be a ten-minute staff presentation, the rest of the time we won't hear. You have the flexibility and structure of those things that everyone wants. You write that down, Robert? How about, I think I said, go back here.
Roundabouts, lights.
That's just how it's kind of. Sure. I like that whole idea. Now, just another way to reach out. Look, we didn't do, we didn't do our new villages. So you, uh, actually, no, this is twenty forty-five, we gotta have weed and alcohol all year.
This was just a comment, is there opportunity here to see?
Yeah, right. I was just thinking about.
Just be saying, like, y'all, everybody's like.
Yeah, I know, I know. I was just thinking, like.
Is it open house?
Well, just think about different ways as these topics come up, like, that one's probably gonna get some attention. Let's throw an open house in. Let's add a listening session or something to try to provide the opportunity. Mayor and I, at the break, we were talking about, you know, a lot of this stuff is, with transparency, is not that people are gonna show up, not that they're gonna add their commentary, but that they have the opportunity to do so, that's like nine tenths of the law is paid. I gave you the information, provided you the opportunity, so, you know. I can tell you right now, and I pulled up this, when we were chatting before we started, the, uh, right after that first one, um, and when I was talking about our communication with the city and our U P, I think it's outstanding. Um, and I say that not just from the perspective of what we do here, but when I was talking to two other city leaders in, at A W C, they, their eyes got big when I told them what we were doing. Right? None of those, a lot of them, most of those cities weren't doing that. They weren't doing that much out there.
They're so big, is that why?
It wasn't just, you know, because most of the cities are actually small.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you, you can go down at A W C site that actually tells you the breakdown of the percentage of the uh, populations of over five thousand or over ten thousand people. There's a lot of small cities out there. But the small cities, and some of the major ones, just don't do what we're doing. They, they just don't. So they were amazed. That's why I say, we are, we are one of the leaders in our communication with our community. And doing stuff like that, adding to it, will just make it that much better.
I think the history of governments, if they don't, they, they care what people think, or we'll have to say, but really, they don't care.
And you just don't trust them.
Right, exactly.
Smoke in the, smoke in the air, it gets, gets out in the back room.
Yeah, but really, we do care, and we really do want to.
You don't just do it in the back room?
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, well, go into this. Will you want to have a say?
I know, but it's not a topic, we need to talk about it. Open misinformation, we own, we own top of the, um, open house.
Oh, I know.
I haven't heard that, but, but there was a connection of that you worked for a manager, something, D D F. But I don't remember.
I did.
Yeah. I worked here, um, you know, when I first moved here and I got married, I worked here for, um, ninety-two, four two thousand and five. In the past, but.
Well, you escaped a lot of stuff, which is good, right?
Well, yeah, neither perception, I was saying, you know, my, my, yes, a month, but it's not like I have an obligation.
Yeah.
But it's, um, but the thing with me is I always go ask people, I don't spread the room. Yeah, a lot of people thought, you know, we all, we all, um. Initially, we bought the property so that business, you know, we, yes, we bought the property, we said the fire station could build there, yes. But we did a lot of different things as, you know, I was second resident, we, we needed to assist. But, and we walked away, you know, we shouldn't be owning, owning that location. And so there's a lot of, you know, this is no more, yeah, or talk to her on Facebook, you work there.
Oh, no, it's like, just talking.
I just don't even go on any of the screen up.
Yeah, I mean, there was a four-page doc saying that was printed, you put on there, we should have been telling them about how corrupt we were. And, um, that ended up being, see how posted.
Tell them to turn for God's sake.
That's one of those Portland things. That's how bad, you know, public, um, you know, social media.
I'll be there, every day, for our, for our, for our hours.
But we, 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 we care.
I guess what I'm trying to say is as individual, elected officials, you have to set that aside. As much as it might be painful and, you know, really bother us. The way I always imagine those is I was putting on one of the police flapjacks going into war. And, and that's what made me laugh and get through it because it's a sad story and all of course, feelings.
It's no good to see a whole, I mean, I'm, I'm, because I just, my sister's emo today. And I'm sitting in the office, and the lady's sitting across from me. Yeah. Um, I'm kind of sitting there, um, working out, working, I'm not sure, liberal. And the nurse and I were, are the, that's the person, she goes, my racket. But as soon as I was sat out there, she didn't sit across from me, she goes, ah. Like this, and that's her face and her husband's, uh, on the shoulder. And I'm like, you can say whatever you want to say, I'm sitting right there, I'm going, oh. She went talking. And then she gets up with her husband and goes into their appointment. And we'll say, as soon as she gets right next to me, she stops, turns and looks at me, she goes, what's your name? I said, Tom. And she goes, no, you're last. From it, and she just walked off. So you, something like this, kind of like.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, you're like, who are you?
I know, but it's.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, I had something.
Oh, yeah, me too, yeah.
In the seat, yeah. Where somebody, I sat down, is that somebody six feet away from me? It was like a long bench back there. She said, am I in your space? And I go, like, look, this, no. Said, am I in your space? And she goes, and this is.
Yeah. Oh, my. Yeah.
Me, it's true, right? You have to learn, you know, how the person, where they go in. I, I quit having my hair done here in town because I just couldn't deal with everything else. I, yes, I had to do that too, because I couldn't deal with everything that people are saying, and then you're gonna record.
Or she's shopping, it's like, ah.
Daisy and I, when we were both working, employers, we had to quit getting our hair done.
You're just checking it off.
Hey, you know what? I'm right there with you. I'm joining that club here.
Like a camera on a local farmer show.
So, have you ever heard of Brene Brown?
Ah, she's wonderful.
There's a psychologist, talks about this anatomy of trust thing, she's brave, she's called a brave trust, this tactic. And brave, each one of these, so boundaries, reliability, accountability, fault, integrity, non-judgment, generosity. Talked about which one of these means, you know, boundaries is, you know, you respect my boundaries, I respect your boundaries. Reliability is, you know, you show up, you do, say you're gonna do, not just once, but every time. Um, accountability, right, it's like, I can own my mistakes and be accountable with you, you can do that with me. Fault, this is basically keeping competence, that you show that you keep confidence with other people in your conversation. So if, you know, you're gossiping, you're giving me the juice, I know that you're probably gossiping about my stuff with somebody else, right? So it's, it destroys trust. But fault, integrity is essentially that we do the right thing rather than what's fun, fast, or easy. Right? Lean into the uncomfortable thing, right thing, non-judgment. So. You know, I don't know anybody that doesn't give some judgment. I know one, one person, not anybody in this room can tell me they don't judge others. So don't wait. What I'm telling you is, this is all stuff that we have to work on, but it's essentially like, um, you know, non-judgment really means, um, you know, some, you, you, it gives an example of where, um, somebody's asking you for help and you're judging it. But. But you're getting something out of them too, because there's something about being the helper that makes you feel good, but you don't feel like you can ask for help. And she, she makes a point that if, you know, you like to be the helper, but you don't like to ask for help, then somewhere inside you, you are judging somebody for asking for help. There's an unequal relationship there. So it's just something you have to send them and figure, you know, figure that out. What I'll do is I will send you a YouTube link to like a ten minute video where she talks through this, we can end up with training. But generosity is making the most generous assumptions of other people. Right? And these two are kind of.
And the non-judgment thing is, is I think being aware of the personal biases in you. And limiting them, being aware of where you're making a decision on against the judge that is right. Well, I was just gonna say that it is, uh, I forgot.
Sorry. And when we talk about being done now, though, there's a difference between assessing, you know, assessing your surroundings. Like, if you're, you're making a judgment of, I assess myself, I should probably, every second of the twelve to sixteen hours that the day I've got work. That's not being critical of somebody, but I had to judge, am I gonna get what they're saying or throwing off the tears? I mean, that's a whole different thing than what we're talking about here with the city and being non-judgmental, meeting with listeners, you know, trying to relate to people and that.
It's a situation.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
It's self-awareness.
Oh, yeah.
But that doesn't fit with it. I forget it.
Self, self-awareness is incumbent in all of those things, right? No, our stuff.
What I, what I mean about was, that time we went to that county council, I spoke to him. And I just remember watching that council and I just thought, how these people are sitting up there, like, acting like they don't care, they look annoyed. They don't really have this listening body language. And so, I mean, I really try and try to be very mindful when I'm up there, especially just being, I don't know, number one right here during podium, I feel like it's just a lot more. It's like, I try to be very conscientious, like, even if it's a topic or I just feel like there's all these people dragging on about the same pain. It's like, no, I'm giving them all the respect, listening to them, because I saw what that was like and it was like, oh, yeah, you know. It's like, well, I didn't come here, take time to come, voice my concern, and then you're a public figure and you act like that you don't even give a rat's of what I'm saying.
So. Maybe you need one of those to play some of them.
Yeah, I, so I just, I think that that's one thing to just, yeah, exactly, this thing. This takes, you know, it's a big responsibility being up here and part of that is just being receptive and being an active listener and showing that respect to everyone, no matter what it is that they're saying. And in the moment, not having that phase of like, ugh, you know, and being very mindful of that you are a filter for them, you know.
I wrote that down on the first page because a lot of these issues that we face are difficult because of about society influences and whether it's, you know, any other level, but especially at the county level. There's a, there's a, there's an airiness there that affects the single issue that is brought up.
And that starts with leadership. Everything starts from top. They start from top. I'm not as ill as I am at this point in the world, but.
Which is what a pop.
Yeah. You can't just buy it from a woman that she's made. Right? So on Thursday, I'm so, you know, quick to slow there, I'm A B and panel as a juror in a superior court jury trial.
Oh, God.
Next week, the county. And so Thursday, I accept the process and I'd never have done that before. But the attorneys, so the attorney from the state, then attorney, were asking us as jurors questions. Kind of gauge our understanding of bias and fairness under the law. And, uh, you know, the defense attorney asked the group panel of technical jurors, um, where, where do you start if you evaluate evidence? And somebody said, well, you consider whole side. And he said, well, that might be true outside of the legal system, but in the legal system, presumptive evidence. And so where you start with the defendant is, they're presumed innocent until, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt, they've been guilty. Um, they talked about some cases establishing complications with evidence that, you know, as one person's word against another, maybe it lacks corroboration evidence. The defendant is not obligated to testify in their own behalf. Uh, that is the obligation of the state. And so then they started asking specific jurors, well, what, what do you think? They asked one juror who had earlier said, oh, yeah, you know, presumption of innocence, that's the principle that we stand on. And then asked, if the defendant doesn't testify in their own defense, what do you think? And they said, well, I would think that you as a defense attorney, don't view them as credible witness, so you're not putting them on the stand. And so it kind of blew up as, oh, you do have a bias. It's in you. And the attorney, they were like, I don't think, like, can you set that aside so that you serve effectively in your and weigh in on this individual's life?
Yeah.
You know? Honestly, on this case, like, save his life and give the other person that you believe is safe. Not under the constitution, they're not all.
Well, just like race, other things, um, there's a lot of. People are allowed to have their scans and they say, okay, that was my.
So like.
Innocent and not guilty are not the same.
Oh, yeah.
Say that again.
Innocent and not guilty are not the same.
Yeah.
Innocent is not guilty. Not guilty. Just being, state hasn't proven it.
Okay.
And reasonable doubt is a suspicion. Reasonable person is a suspicion, right? But our legal system. Okay, so let's talk about your next year and the timing of that. I'm assuming you have a list of last.
Yeah.
Assuming your next one will be after the new year, we have a new county. Start the university, that's a Monday, we'll talk about what, uh, what would work good for you and evidence for the rest of the council. So I can do, we can get it down on a date now. I can be very interested in something. Can you read the first? Oh, by the way. What's the first Monday of January this year? Uh, take a look at that. The first day is the. Well, maybe we don't do the first Monday of January for the university to do it on for the other months and do it the second Monday. And then that way we do the retreat on that Saturday. Just stay down here and tell them. Well, I can, I can do that though, because the second Monday is when I have council, right? So we, you, the first Monday for the center university, let's do it at that, or come down, you're okay with that? Stand and deliver back, yeah, that's perfectly all right. And then, that's my question. We could do the tenth as a retreat day, Saturday the tenth. And I can also do the seventeenth.
Okay, so January fifth and then we create a.
I can also do the seventeenth. So we'll start January fifth for the center university. That would be travel or club ball.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's travel ball. I think it's one of the.
So that's the tenth. We can push to the seventeenth if that works better.
That's okay, we can.
Okay, we can now. See, how about work, twenty fourth would be the next one? That'd be a good one, because I, this year we plan on doing M P C in the first week of February. Okay. Travel ball.
Well, it says tournament.
That's where I get information, uh, going over with the lobbyists and the senators. Be like, with the, uh, the council. So can we start at January twenty fourth then for the next retreat? And I think what I'm gonna suggest as an agenda item would be, uh, elected officials training, which I can do. Um, and that's both D M A, P R A and full development for your new council member. And we'll tee it up in a way where you're all sharing your experiences with your new federal council member. Would that run? Should we do something about seven, seven member council before the event or should we do that after the next retreat? I think, I think Jean has something planned for the new council member. I think you get with her before we get to going on the, uh, on that agenda. Okay. I have a little, the retreat today isn't doing, but I need to talk with you.
Casey, what were you saying about, um, the twenty four? There might be something else.
Uh, yeah, there might be a baseball tournament that we.
Twenty four, too?
Well, as we look at the thirty birthday, I think there might be, is that something that you should kind of be, you know, obligated to wanna be involved in?
Yes, yeah.
So I can actually see. That's why I go back to the, these kids, that first week of February. The first Monday of February, I'm not gonna be available, so we'll have to push the center university out. Maybe even to the third Monday. And then we're gonna go on a little vacation.
Third Monday is President's Day.
Third Monday is President's Day.
Well, I have to take a party that day.
So I'll, I'll work on the center university schedule.
Yeah, we may start.
Yeah. But I was thinking, like, would it be, would it be possible for people to, I mean, like, do like a noon to four review? On the, on the midweek? Oh, midweek?
Midweek!
Like, yeah, I, I think we could have eight hours, I think.
Don't we have ten of these January ones?
Are we seeing January's work then, really?
Yep.
I think it's complex.
My son's gonna be partying, everybody's waiting for me.
Oh, all right.
You guys are talking about the, 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 my schedule, though. I, I didn't have somewhere to be.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, thank you. This is, oh, you got copies.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate all of your time, thanks, Jeff, appreciate it. A little C U again, so, yeah, yeah, thank you, appreciate it all, yeah.
Okay, well, so we'll, we'll move forward with this and solidify this in terms of the next retreat date, then agenda, et cetera. Sean passing out, uh, some information regarding C T R A for your consideration. And then I think that's, it wants to be. You know, thank you very much. You know, if we could, uh, send off pictures of this, these one of the council members, they'd be great. Also, the students. And you know, probably it'd be a bad idea to leave them up with people that come in, the council, you know, and would say, does he have? Yeah? Bad idea. You know, we could play it right across the front, that would be, okay, let's see if they wouldn't take them down. But then they can get an idea of what they, what they just a little bit. Yeah? What do you got? All right. Yeah, we can, uh, I'll just leave them here to, how about, I'll take pictures of them so I can compile notes, that would be great.
I'll take pictures.
Okay. That would be wonderful.
I'll want a picture of that.
Why don't you feel dressed up like a logger? He's like the museum.
That's daily wear, what do you mean?
Do you want any of those, Jen, for your?
He's dressed up like that.
Yeah, I'd love to take a look at that, Sean. Just three.